Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, May 8th, 2023. I now call the meeting to order and I will ask Commissioner Rojas to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Rojas. Anna, will you please do the voice roll call, please?
Chair Erith.
Present.
Vice Chair Toller.
Here.
Commissioner Rojas.
Here.
Commissioner Zick.
Here.
Commissioner Andrade.
Here.
Commissioner Vivar.
Present.
Commissioner Taber is absent.
Thank you, Anna. We have no announcements or presentations this evening, which brings us to public comments. Public comments will be heard at this time on items that are not listed on the agenda but are within our jurisdiction. I'll now open the public comment. If you'd like to speak, please come to the podium. And if you are joining us via Zoom, you can reuse the raised hand option, or if you're joining us on the phone, you can press star nine if you'd like to speak. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I was here last time speaking in regards to an initiative that's a statewide initiative. On the screen, you're going to be seeing a slide that is going to show you a project that is already under consideration in San Francisco. I might add that it's surrounded by single-family homes. Now, let's go back to why I'm showing you this slide. I'm excited to tell you that there is an initiative that is going to be coming on the November 24 ballot. It's going to be an initiative that is going to undo the unwieldy numbers, that RENA numbers, that was handed out to every city in the state. Cities that can't handle their numbers, something like Costa Mesa, an outrageous amount of numbers without any consideration to infrastructure. But OurNeighborhoodVoices.com, if there's anybody listening, go to that, go to that online, see what's happening with this initiative. It's gaining great support statewide. It has 40 individual cities that are supporting it. SCAG is now onboard with this initiative. And what this initiative does, it returns local control. So each city can plan as, in a unique way involving the residents. So SCAG represents 191 cities. So we have 40 individual cities, 191 cities in SCAG, and we have Northern California that has jumped on this like gangbusters. So it's growing great support. Hopefully, it will be in the Secretary of State and be signed to go on the ballot by July 4th, I mean, July 1st. Every Wednesday, there's a Zoom meeting. So if you go on OurNeighborhoodVoices.com, there's a one-hour Zoom meeting. It's very informative. You learn lots of stuff from all over the state, from, from the Oregon border to San Diego. It's amazing. Everybody is angry and they don't want what's going on with these present RENA numbers. So please get involved. I know you're tired. I know you're exhausted. Nobody wants any part of politics anymore, but we have to. This is our city. This is our state. So this initiative will be on the ballot. You know it's going to have billions of dollars of support by the developers because these RENA numbers are an absolute boon to developers. And you saw what happened in Costa Mesa. The residents got drowned by developer money in RK. We had $7,000. They had $200,000 plus money we don't even know about NIEs. So please, get involved. Zoom meeting every Wednesday at 6:00 PM. I think you'll be shocked at some of the information.
Thank you, Ms. Spadoni. Is there anyone else in chambers who wishes to speak? If you do, please come forward to either podium. All right, seeing none. Anna, do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have anyone on telephone?
No, we do not.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll now close public comments, and this brings us to commit one more. Sir, please come to the front. You'll have three minutes to speak and you'll hear a chime at one minute. Okay? No problem.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Omar. I am a resident of the College Park neighborhood, specifically College Drive, which backs up immediately adjacent to the Harbor Center Shopping Center, that is being a special permit by our friends of the Northgate Market, looking for special dispensation. Why, I am eagerly awaiting a return of a market to the local neighborhood and excited for that. I did want to speak to offer my opposition for...
Sir, if you are speaking about the Northgate Market, I think you'll have to wait until that item comes up. This is for matters that are not listed on the agenda for this evening.
My apologies. Thank you, sir.
Sure. Thank you. All right. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak? All right. No one else on telephone or Zoom still?
There's not, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. And I will officially close public comments.
Chair, before we move on and after you, and possibly after you close public comments, I just want to mention that we did notice that application at 1505 Mesa Verde West for a cannabis item. And just wanted to mention if there's anybody in the audience that is waiting for that, that item was, been tabled and won't be heard tonight.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Director Dropkin. Did everyone get that in the crowd? There, there is a previous notice for a cannabis, a retail cannabis application at, is it 1501 Mesa Verde Drive? 1505 Mesa Verde Drive? That item has been tabled right now. So if you showed up for that item, we're not going to be hearing that item this evening. We're not going to be hearing that item this evening.
And prior to being heard again, it'll be noticed. If, if and when.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Director Dropkin. We, I couldn't tell you. But you'll, you, we will be re-noticing it if it comes to...
Okay. I'll do that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. So this brings us to Commissioner comments, and I will start with Commissioner Vivar.
Hi, yeah. Just wanted to thank those who are here tonight. Yeah, please do keep checking the website as many of the notices for Planning Commission items do go on the website, where the public can see what the agendas will have for Planning Commission, as well as the accompanying staff reports and materials for that as well. I want to also let everyone know that next week, May 16th, there will be a joint study session with the Costa Mesa City Council and the Planning Commission on Inclusionary Housing. So joint study session at 6:00 PM, I believe that there will be, I'm out of time.
You get all the time you want.
I guess. From what I heard, the city council meeting, a regular city council meeting at 6 o'clock will take place and immediately after that, city council meeting is over, then the joint study session will take place. So just wanted to put that out there for anybody who is interested in this topic or would also just like to come and give our city-appointed and elected officials your thoughts on this ordinance and the policy development that's going to go around that. So mark your calendars, May 16th, 6:00 PM, joint study session, meeting on Inclusionary Housing, Planning Commission, City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Commissioner Rojas?
I have no comments.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Zick?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Andrade?
Nothing.
Okay. Vice Chair Toller?
No comments tonight. Thank you.
Wow. I don't have much to share other than to say that between the last meeting and this evening, I participated in the Arbor Day event for the city. We were at a T-Winkle Park and planted 30 new trees in that park in celebration of that day. Mayor Stevens was out there. Chair Rutherford from the Parks Commission was out there, and we had a great time. There was a lot of folks from Ernst &amp; Young who came out to plant the trees as well. So there's a lot of volunteers, and I highly encourage the public to get out, get involved. There's a lot of stuff that's coming up this summer, so if you're looking for something to do, there's no shortage of it here in the city. So I encourage you to take part in it. With that said, that's all for me. And this brings us to the consent calendar for the evening. I see that we have one for this evening, and if you will, Anna, if you could read that into the record.
Consent calendar, item number one, April 10th, 2023, unofficial meeting minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Anna. Commissioners, any comments on the minutes? All right. I have none either. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion, if anyone would like to make one. Motion by Vice Chair Toller. What is your motion, Vice Chair?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Rojas. Would you like to speak to your motion, Vice Chair?
No comments.
Nope. All right. Seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it to the vote, Anna.
That motion carries 6-0 with Commissioner Taber absent.
Right. Thank you very much. This brings us to our public hearing. We have one public hearing this evening, and Anna, if you'd please read the title for that. Much appreciated.
Public hearing, item number one, major amendment to master plan PA 23-03, PA-98-50A3, for reduction of required off-street parking and to modify operational characteristics of a conditional use permit to allow live entertainment within 200 feet of a residentially-zoned property, minor conditional use permit ZA 23-01, to allow an outdoor dining patio and a public convenience or necessity determination for alcohol beverage control license type 21 and 47 for the Northgate Market located at 2300 Harbor Boulevard. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided the Commission and made a part of the record. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
All right. Thank you very much, Anna. I think that sets a record so far for the longest title, right? All right. Commissioners, any ex parte communications to report, starting with Commissioner Vivar?
Yeah.
Yes. I attended the April 22nd, 2023 community event that was held by Northgate Markets at 2300 Harbor Boulevard and spoke to members of the Gonzalez family, or the ownership of the market chain, as well as some of their corporate staff, marketing people, I believe it was. And I also had a phone call with their marketing representative a couple of weeks prior to that, and that's what I have.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Andrade?
Yeah, I'll have to unfortunately recuse myself as a neighbor of the future location, but best of luck.
Okay. Well, thank you. I think you can wait here until we start hearing the item, so you can go back after this. Commissioner Zick?
Couple of months ago, I had a telephone conversation with an advocate for the applicant, someone who identified themselves as a former Santa Ana city official. And then this weekend, I went and visited a Northgate Market in Santa Ana.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Rojas?
None, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Chair?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Thank you. And for me, I was made aware of this project on January 30th, when I held a call with one of the, one of the folks from the applicant's team, Jill Wallace, introducing the project, but it was not a substantive discussion. It was more of an introduction that we would be hearing it at this time. And then this afternoon, I talked to one of the neighbors, Ms. Lindano, on the phone for approximately 10 minutes as well. So that's, that's all the ex parte for me. I will now turn it over to Mr. Aldana to present the item.
Good evening, Chair Erith and Commissioners. I'm Christopher Aldana, Assistant Planner with the Economic and Development Services. This evening, Sung will be assisting me with my PowerPoint presentation, so when I call slide, he'll change the slides. Thank you. So this request is for a major amendment to a master plan PA 2303, for a reduction of required off-street parking and to modify operational characteristics, a conditional use permit PA 2302, to allow live entertainment within 200 feet of residentially-zoned property, a minor conditional use permit ZA 2301, to allow an outdoor dining patio to encroach into required parking, and a public convenience or necessity determination for alcoholic, for alcoholic beverages control license type 21 and type 47 for a flagship Northgate Market. The Planning Commission approved the Harbor Center Master Plan PA 9850 on May 10th of 1999, PA 9850 entitled demolition of a 250-square-foot multi-tenant retail center and the construction of a new shopping center with approximately 320 square feet of commercial floor area. Since redevelopment of the center, two subsequent master plan amendments have been approved. The two subsequent master plan amendments include PA 9922, which permitted demolition of two detached existing buildings and allowed the construction of an 11,535-square-foot multi-tenant commercial building near the intersection of Harbor Boulevard and Wilson Street, and for master plan amendment PA 0522, which included a conditional use permit to operate a recreational vehicle storage facility with a request to increase the maximum wall height. There have also been various entitlements associated with the site, such as a minor conditional use permit for a plan sign program. As mentioned, the project site is located at 2300 Harbor Boulevard, the Harbor Center. The shopping center consists of a mix of uses that include retail, restaurants, and professional services. There are several anchor stores that are currently operating at the center, including Home Depot, TJ Maxx, Home Goods, and a Rite Aid pharmacy. The approximate 25.7-acre property is zone shopping center district C1S and has a general plan land use designation of general commercial. Existing physical onsite improvements consist of landscaping, off-street parking, and trash enclosures. Here are site photos which show the current conditions of the building. Building C was previously occupied by Albertson's Grocery Store and has been vacant since February of 2020. The proposed use is a closed renovation and reoccupancy of the space is intended to provide access to fresh produce and meats and a vibrant, modern, and multifaceted mercado market experience. The proposed exterior renovation of the tenant space would include new paint, landscaping, new shopping cart corrals, and operational corn silo, and new outdoor dining area. In general, the project consists of a limited tenant improvement, minor renovations to the exterior appearance of the building, and would introduce new outdoor patios to the west and south facade of the building. Slide? The proposed location of the business is Building C, as shown on the site plan, within the Harbor Center and is shaded in red on the site plan. The proposed patio areas are highlighted yellow. Entry into the grocery store would only be permitted through the main entrance, and entrance into the patio areas is only accessible from the inside of the grocery store. Slide? The majority of the proposed floor plan consists of a typical supermarket, as highlighted in yellow, with various ancillary uses such as culinary kiosks, a dining area, a bar, a 149-square-foot entertainment stage, a Prospera Bank, a commissary kitchen, bakery, and alcoholic spirits puesto kiosk. In regards to dining, customers would be able to purchase food and beverages from various kiosks and eat at open tables provided in both indoor and outdoor areas of the market. So the details of master plan amendment PA 2303. Pursuant to Costa Mesa Municipal Code, a major amendment is considered a substantial amendment to the plan if the proposal encompasses one or more minor changes listed in 13-28G, or any proposed change determined by the Development Services Director as a major amendment. The proposed project includes two minor changes, as listed within Costa Mesa Municipal Code 1328G, which are, one, to change the character of the development, and, two, to reduce the required parking spaces. Therefore, the request is a major amendment to the master plan. The proposed changes to character of the development include modifying the exterior building facade features and a reduction in required parking to establish outdoor dining seating areas. The exterior facade modifications generally include new paint, metal awnings, and updating existing fenestrations. A new 17-foot-high silo is also provided near the front west facade of the building. The silo would serve as a new architectural feature, adding to the theme of the proposed market, and would also be fully functional and would deliver dried corn to the interior of the fresh tortilla processing. The exterior facade modification will also include future art mural installations on the west facade of the building. Per conditions of approval number 19, the proposed murals are required to be reviewed by the City of Costa Mesa Arts Commission prior to installation. The market will provide customers several dining options and include exterior modifications to provide outdoor seating areas where customers can enjoy their meals al fresco. The outdoor dining seating areas will involve the conversion of two existing built-in shopping cart corrals and replacing 16 existing parking stalls located adjacent to West Wilson Street with a 3,268-square-foot dining patio. The built-in shopping cart areas that will be converted are located on the west side of the building, adjacent to the main parking lot, and are approximately 525 square feet and 506 square feet in area. For easier customer access, new shopping cart corrals would be located closer to the main entrance. The design of the proposed patio dining area located on the south facade of the building would be designed in a manner to attenuate noise. The southerly portion of the wall facing West Wilson Street would have a hybrid design consisting of a four-foot acoustic block wall and four foot of double-pane glass barrier. The west, the west patio would be constructed with an acoustic block wall, sliding door, and mass-loading vinyl attached to the interior, and emergency exit. The west patio wall is furthest from the existing residential uses. Next slide? The applicant proposes an approximate 149-square-foot stage located within the confines of the market to host occasional live entertainment. The proposed entertainment includes, but are not limited to, live music, creative, creative cooking demonstrations. Subject to the approval of conditional use permit, live entertainment may be permitted in establishments where food and beverages are served in the C1S zone that are located within 200 feet of residentially-zoned property. The project is located within 200 feet of residentially-zoned property and therefore requires a CUP to allow live entertainment in the indoor dining area. Conditions of approval for live entertainment include a requirement to obtain a live entertainment permit and renew it annually pursuant to CMMC Section 9-199. Also, annual live entertainment permits are subject to city review for ensuring peace and tranquility of any residential area, to mitigate traffic impacts, to protect other uses in the area, and/or to protect the public health and safety. Lastly, in pursuant to Costa Mesa Municipal Code Section 9-201, a live entertainment permit can be suspended or revoked if permit compliance or neighborhood compatibility issues are determined. Slide? As previously discussed, the project component includes three outdoor dining seating areas. The outdoor dining seating area located on the southerly facade would encroach into an existing parking area and would result in a reduction of 16 off-street parking stalls. Therefore, pursuant to CMMC Section 13-48, the project includes a request for minor, for a minor conditional use permit to allow for an outdoor seating area that encroaches into required parking area. Also pursuant to CMMC Section 1348, the outdoor seating area shade structure will not be located within the setback requirements and would not create a fully enclosed seating area. The open-air enclosure is designed with double-pane window panels to ensure views of Wilson Street are unobstructed. The outdoor dining seating area was designed in a manner to ensure that the operation of the outdoor space does not generate a public nuisance to the surrounding neighborhood. The outdoor dining area would design, was designed to address noise and safety concerns and is conditioned to comply with all building and fire code requirements. So in this image above, you can see the number five elevation for Wilson Street. The first four feet is concrete block wall, and then above that, there's four feet of double-pane glass, so that the individuals enjoying their meals and beverages in the patio area can still obtain a view of Wilson. And on Section A, the rear patio, you see that the portion of the block wall facing the residential is solid block, and the only entry and exit point is an emergency egress and ingress. Public convenience or necessity determination. Pursuant to Section 23958.4 of the Business and Professional Code, the governing body of a local jurisdiction has the authority to determine PCN findings. In accordance with the City Council Policy Number 508, the Planning Commission may make a finding of public convenience or necessity as required before the state can issue an on-sale or off-sale license for the establishment. As indicated above in the report, the PCN or necessity can be determined because the operation of the supermarket would be consistent with the requirements of the zoning code and general plan. Further, the Police Department has reviewed the request along with the security camera plan and has no objections. Additionally, the requested licenses provided a convenience to customers without impacting the surrounding uses. And lastly, similar alcohol licenses were previously approved under the prior tenant, Albertson's, with no neighborhood or surrounding commercial use impacts. Costa Mesa Municipal Code Section 13-280, exterior noise standards provides outdoor and indoor noise standards to control unnecessary and excessive sounds generated on one piece of property from affecting adjacent property and to protect residential areas from noise sources other than transportation sources. In an effort to attenuate noise, the city requested an acoustic analysis from the applicant. In an effort to attenuate noise, specifically in regards to the outdoor seating area located adjacent to Wilson Street, the city requested an acoustic analysis from the applicant, which is included in the report, as demonstrated in the acoustic analysis report prepared by Sound Media Fusion LLC on February 10th of 2023. The proposed patio located along Wilson Street and is, as designed and with the appropriate noise reduction measures, is expected to operate in compliance with the Costa Mesa Municipal Code noise standards and will not exacerbate ambient noise in the area. Lastly, no live entertainment is proposed in the outdoor areas, and potential noise sources are limited to light background music, ambient music, and the typical sounds associated with eating. Pursuant to conditional approval number 18, patio areas are limited to low-volume, pre-recorded ambient background music and monitored with noise meters by trained staff. The music shall not be audible off-site. In regards to the noise meters, one noise meter would be located in the patio dining area, and one noise meter would be located, attached to the block wall. That divides both the commercial and the residentially-zoned properties. Staff would be trained on how to manage those devices, and prior to planning's final approval, an onsite inspection would be required to make sure that the staff is trained and that those noise meters are functional. In regards to security, Northgate confirmed that there will be onsite security personnel... Northgate confirmed that there will be onsite security personnel who will assure that alcohol is consumed responsibly. The security personnel will walk the interior and exterior of the premises regularly to ensure that the site is safe and to promote a welcoming environment. The onsite security personnel is in addition to the loss prevention team and the loss prevention security plan. In addition, a loss prevention CCTV security plan was presented to the Costa Mesa Police Department for review. And due to the proprietary details in the document, it's not shown today. However, the Police Department did commend the amount of security cameras onsite and stated it was an exemplary security plan. Lynn Scott Law and Greenspan Engineers, L L G, conducted the original parking analysis. Slide. Sorry. Lynn Scott Law and Greenspan Engineers, L L G, conducted the original parking analysis for P A ninety-eight fifty and for the proposed project and has updated the parking demand analysis for this project. The analysis accounts for the existing parking requirements and operational needs of the existing shopping center and assesses the parking implications associated with the parking demand for the proposed Northgate Market, inclusive of proposed potential in-store dining, food uses, and outdoor dining patio areas. The analysis focused on calculating the code-based parking requirements for Harbor Center based on the application of CMMC parking ratios, estimating parking demand through the application of the City of Costa Mesa procedures for determining shared parking requirements, and compares the estimated shared parking demand against the existing parking supply in order to identify any potential operational surplus or deficiency in parking spaces with the proposed Northgate Market. As specified by the analysis conducted by L L G, the mix of tendencies within the shopping center, a shared parking analysis consistent with the City of Costa Mesa procedure and determining shared parking requirements has been prepared and indicates that the shared parking supply of one thousand eight, four hundred and eighty-four spaces will be sufficient to meet the projected peak parking demands of existing and proposed uses, including the proposed Northgate Market. So, the parking supply onsite is fourteen eighty-four, and at peak demand, which is at one P M on weekdays, the demand for parking would be one thousand two hundred and thirteen, and on weekends at two P M, the peak demand would be one thousand two hundred and eight. Both peak demand hours are well below the fourteen eighty-four. There would be sufficient parking onsite. Slide. Condition of approval. Conditions of approval have been added to this entitlement, such as the required compliance with A B C state regulations and requirements for annual live entertainment, permit renewal, and installation of sound monitoring equipment prior to final planning approval, along with all the previously mentioned conditions of approval that are stated in the slide, such as hours of operation for the patio area, A B C conditions of approval, live entertainment conditions of approval, and facility maintenance requirements. Slide. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to find the project as categorically exempt and approve the project subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes the presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Aldana. It was a great presentation. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff on this item? Starting with Commissioner Zick.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Aldana, for your presentation. I do have a number of questions for you. Starting with the very first page of the staff report, the four different approvals that you indicate there. The major amendment for the master plan having to do with the parking, number one. Number two, I want to make sure I understand this, first of all. Number two, the CUP for live entertainment. Number three, the outdoor patio. And number four, the public convenience. So as I'm understanding it, there are four separate approvals that are discussed and recommended in this, correct?
Correct. So there's four entitlements encapsulated in this one presentation.
Correct. So my question is, because each of those four sound to me like they completely stand alone, is it conceivable that some of these could be approved and some of these would not be approved?
So, all but the minor conditional use permit, and typically the PCN, would go to the zoning administrator hearing body. But in an effort to streamline the application, those two have been deferred to the Planning Commission for review. So ideally, it's a package deal for the Planning Commission's discretion.
So, so thank you for that. And I think I would recognize that ideally, maybe from both a staff perspective and obviously from an applicant perspective, that would be the ideal. My question is a little more nuanced than that. If, for example, there was not enthusiasm for the live entertainment, is it conceivable that the other three approvals could be granted? They're not dependent on each other, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so you mentioned in your presentation something that I hadn't picked up in the package. And I had a question on page that originated from page four of the staff report that indicated purchase of food and beverage at various kiosks. And then this, you know, these products could be then enjoyed indoor or outdoor. And I was curious, who is going to be monitoring, particularly the consumption of alcohol? And you indicated there's onsite security. So my question is, what condition of approval is it that requires that there be onsite security?
So the applicant has actually volunteered to provide that onsite security, which is a benefit. It shows that they want to make sure that it's a safe environment for all to enjoy. They've also gone above and beyond in their security plan. I can't show you how many cameras they have onsite, but they have quite a number. They'll also be walking the premise. So to answer your question, I don't believe that there's a condition that specifically states that there has to be onsite security, but the applicant is willingly adding that.
So staff is not recommending that there be onsite security? Is that what you're saying?
I believe currently, and if I might step in a bit, certainly a condition would be suitable for this project to have a security monitor for that, and then also speak to the applicant how they plan on addressing the alcoholic service and monitoring. Usually that's controlled with the state A B C license, and we generally leave it to them. However, we have had conditions in prior projects where we thought it might, there might be sensitive issues where we've required certain security monitoring for alcohol license. So in a short answer to your question, Commissioner Zick, right now, we don't have the condition like Chris mentioned, but we could have it if the commission felt so.
Thank you, and that's fair also. Okay, then my next question has to do with page five, and the diagram that shows the various eating areas. And you had a, I think, the same diagram in your presentation. And I was specifically looking at the light blue areas, which are the indoor seating areas. And I noticed that the shapes of those areas on the diagram match pretty close to the layout of the tables in the area as opposed to the open square footage. So my question based on that is, is the applicant allowed to add additional seating beyond what is on the floor plan that was included in the staff report?
Yes, so they're allowed, you know, X amount of square footage for the interior seating and the outdoor seating areas, but we did not calculate that by the dimensions of the tables. We calculated that by the square footage of the gross floor area in order to generate the required parking calculations that are necessary. So, L L G produced this plan, and then based on this plan, they were able to demonstrate that if we were to allow, you know, X amount of square footage to indoor dining, which is, requires a parking, a different parking ratio than retail, so it takes in consideration the demand for how many individuals and vehicles and traffic that that amount of square footage would require, that with these numbers, you know, they would still meet the parking requirement. They would still meet their parking requirements. Does that answer your question?
Maybe partially, but let me take another run at it because it didn't address the concern that I have. Again, if I look at the blue shaded parts of the floor plan, they do not match the open space around those tables. And so, for example, the group of four tables that represent then that one tiny rectangular blue area, would the applicant be allowed to add a fifth table in that area? There's plenty of floor space to do that. Would they be allowed to do that?
Yes, it's that area. The image of the seating arrangement on the plan is conceptual. So that might change once they go through their tenant improvement process, but they would be limited to demonstrating either by interior design methods or signage, you know, some type of tile, that the space that they're indicating for dining area is where patrons would be able to consume their beverages and also their food.
So the square footage is on page five of the staff report that are shown in the light blue table above.
Those, sorry, go ahead.
Do not match the footprints shown on the floor plan. In other words, if I had that floor plan at a large enough size that I could scale those areas, those areas would not be the square footage shown in the table above. The table above would have larger square footages because it would include areas around the tables. Is that what you're telling me?
I think that's a great question for the architect, Kevin Lee. He's present to see if those areas were drawn to scale.
Okay, that's my question, so I'll move on.
Yeah.
Okay, also on the floor plan wall, I have that in front of me. And I'm looking at the outside dining area. And I'm looking at... So I'm looking at the east end of that outdoor dining area, and that's where there is a single emergency exit, correct? That's not really my question, it's more for orientation from a next question.
Correct.
Okay, so on the west side, there's also a single door. What is that?
So there's a single door and a sliding gate.
I was going to get to the gate, but go ahead and tell me about both of those.
Yeah, so the emergency exit is in case of an emergency.
They're both emergency exits?
The sliding gate is for moving equipment, such as the tables, or if they're going to do an interior remodel and change out fixtures or lighting, so that they don't have to, you know, the crew doesn't have to go in through the primary grocery store. They can go in through the...
I get that. So the two doors are emergency exits, the one on east and west? Okay. And my next question is, on that eastern extremity, just outside that patio area, there appears to be double doors, but it's hard to tell what those arcs are. They don't look quite like door swings. What is that? Is that an entrance or exit?
Are you... Are you talking about the ones near the door that's in the parking lot by the facade? On, attached to the facade, the south side of the building?
Yes.
So...
It looks like you could walk through there and get into the restrooms. And that's what it looks like on the plan.
Correct. So that was a concern. But that door can only be accessed from the inside of the building, not from the outside of the building. So if you're inside the grocery store, you can use restrooms. And I can get clarification from the applicant if that's an emergency exit, but there is a door there.
Okay, so that'll be another question I'll ask the applicant, is what exactly is that? And the last question on this floor plan, right near the, on the interior of the building, next to the automatic sliding doors, there's an octagonal something. What is that? I don't see a label on the floor plan as to what that is.
Next to the stage?
Next to the stage, just to the left of the, or just to the north of the sliding doors.
I believe it's a fountain, but we can double-check with the applicant as well.
Do you know if the applicant's sound engineer is here? Because I have several questions about the sound, and if they're not here, I will ask those of you.
So the applicant was prepared to answer questions on behalf of the team that provided the sound attenuation study? So those questions can be directed to the applicant as well.
Okay, I'll do that. And then with regard to the... I'll start with the restaurant space that's on the interior of the building. Because it's labeled restaurant, does that mean that there are going to be servers, waitresses, waiters, taking care of customers in that area? You don't know?
I don't know.
Okay.
But the applicant that would know?
Yep. Okay, condition of approval number six, which speaks to the issue of this emergency exit. Let me find the exact wording. Well, it simply references an emergency exit. It does not say in that condition of approval, and I want to know if this is a requirement, that that emergency exit remain closed at all times. The east portion of the enclosure has an emergency exit. Will we require that that remain closed at all times?
Absolutely. We can add that language.
Okay, I would want that. There's another open-door sound issue in the city that you may be aware of, and I think this is what brings that to mind. And then apparently, there is a emergency exit on the west wall. That also should be called out and identified as remaining closed at all times.
Okay.
There's an interesting phraseology in condition number eight that, condition of approval number eight, says, "In the event that the southern outdoor patio, the large outdoor patio, is removed, the area must be returned to parking." My question is, what if it ceases operation? What if they shut it down because it's not popular or there's issues, but they haven't actually removed it? Is shutting it down or ceasing operations the same thing? And would we require then the area to be re-established as parking?
That was the intent of that provision, yeah.
Okay. So maybe the language there needs to be adjusted to make that requirement more clear. Condition of approval number twelve identifies that there are two devices calibrated to measure sound levels, and it also indicates... And it also indicates that the sound measurement will be conducted by a professional sound monitor. So the two questions I have about that is in the Sound Fusion, Sound Media Fusion report, they indicate that they use or recommend what they call integrated meters. And we didn't use that term in our condition of approval. We just said devices that are calibrated. So there's no more precise language as to what those are. And then the sound monitor, they indicate that this equipment requires sophisticated operators. Your presentation made it sound like some employee, staff person was going to be trained. So I'm wondering how you transferred this technical recommendation into this condition of approval? It doesn't sound as robust as what Sound Media Fusion is recommending.
I definitely would like to double check with the applicant on that, but I believe the intent for that was, based on the condition in the noise study, was that the initial noise reading device was calculated or calibrated, however you want to call it, for accurate readings. And then continuing forward, a, obviously the noise consultant, well, not obviously, but a noise wouldn't have to come out if an employee could operate that facility once calibrated correctly. But again, we've asked the applicant to bring the noise consultant to the hearing. And instead, the applicant has said they can answer these questions. So I do, would like to defer them.
Okay. So I'm a little bit curious about the layout. And I'm sure this is going to be an applicant question too, but I'll pose it to you. So we're clearly concerned about sound levels to the extent that we have Sound Media Fusion doing all this analysis and recommendations and comparison of conditions with different attenuation structures. No live music out on the patio. Yet we have this soundstage immediately adjacent to automatic opening doors, which are going to be opening and closing and opening and closing continually. And every time they're open, the soundstage, which is right there, is going to be sending noise out those doors. And so my question is, do we have any requirement as to the volume level limit for the live entertainment sound?
Yes, Commissioner Zick. Condition number 31 mentions that music, the live entertainment shall at all times be conducted within the building and shall not be audible off-site.
Okay. Okay, so no matter how loud it is inside the building, that requirement basically protects outside interests.
Yeah, it's kind of a non-technological planning catch-all, if you will.
Okay, and related to that, I don't see any reference anywhere to the presence of or prohibition of big screen TVs in that outdoor patio area. And I would be advocating for a specific condition of approval that prohibited big screen TVs in that outdoor patio area. My question is, is that something you considered?
It was not considered, but it seems like it's reasonable, based on volume or light.
Cheering to basketball, baseball, football, soccer?
Oh.
Yeah. Okay, condition of approval number 22. Why do we have that? Why would we care if they establish some sort of a private club membership program or something?
That condition existed with the original master plan and was carried forward. We do, and I, without knowing for sure, I don't even want to try to suggest that I understand that, but it just remained. I can't tell you why, I really can't.
Okay, that's a, no problem.
Yeah.
And then on-
I have seen it before, though.
Okay. Condition of approval number 43 is calling out specifically this idea of access into the patio area. And it says would be limited, well, would be from the interior of the market. And the entry is from the west and south of the building. What entrances? I don't understand that reference to the south of the building. That's my question. Access to the market? Seems to me there were only entrances on the west of the building, not south of the building.
The way that condition should be intended to review by is that the access is from the front of the building near the parking lot, but there's also access from the outdoor patio area as well. But there's not necessarily access from outside. It was my poor choice, and actually I edited that. And now, looking back at it, it does read poorly. But the intent was to show that there was access from the patio. And then there was also access from the front parking lot into the building. But really not necessarily into the building from outside at the patio level, from the parking lot or anything like that. And if it reads that way, it's not meant to be. So it might need some tweaking a little, and I apologize.
Okay, and then the, I think, closing in on the, near the end of my questions. Condition of approval number 44. So I understand that a lot of these conditions are specific to the operations that Northgate is proposing. And normally, when we issue a C U P, it runs with the land to the extent that there is a similar use that might take over an existing property or facility. So I'm rather curious about us identifying that these conditions are specific to Northgate as opposed to maybe saying these conditions are specific to Suite C or whatever this premises might be legally identified as.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct with the way conditions run with the land, with that comment, Commissioner Zick. I will mention that the only reason that Northgate has mentioned that in that situation or in that condition was to highlight the fact that there are conditions that we've included in this report that are, in addition to the master plan conditions, that were approved originally. That was the intent of that. Again, wording, you could word it differently.
Okay, that's it for now. Thank you very much for trying to tackle those.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. And Mr. Aldana and Director Drapkin, did you take note of some of those recommendations? We might need to revisit that if this comes to a vote. Commissioners, questions of staff? Commissioner Vivar?
Yeah, thank you to staff for your great responses to Commissioner Zick. And Commissioner Zick, thank you for your line of questioning as well, very thorough and actually knocked out some of my questions. So I do have several questions left, though, however, and a few questions I might be expanding on some of what Commissioner Zick might have asked about the project. So my first question is about the alcohol, alcohol and spirits puestos. So are those supposed to be operated by Northgate? Or would those be operated by a tenant situation? Like, Northgate is planning for their little, like, rentable kitchen and stove area?
That would be a question that would be best given to the applicant. But it's my understanding that the Northgate would be the, basically, operation soul. They would operate everything.
So Northgate Market would be selling all the alcohol? None of the tenants in their store would be offering any alcohol? Is that correct?
There was no information in the application that indicated that anyone but Northgate would be offering the sale of alcohol? I don't know if that is response to your question, but your last part of your question seemed to go a different direction.
I guess I'm just curious if the A B C permits would cover for just alcohol sales in general in the store? Or are alcohol sales by Northgate specifically?
I see, I see. I can't answer for what the A B C license would cover in that scenario. I will mention that I believe, I can only, it would only be conjecture, but I believe that it would need a separate alcohol license for another operator. They wanted to lease out space. So I don't think that the licenses are transferable, except by one owner to the next owner, through the A B C.
Right, so what I'm hearing from you is that only the Northgate shelves and Northgate food establishments and Northgate alcohol puesto would be the one selling alcohol, but the tenants would be limited to food?
Yeah, I honestly don't know what the situation that Northgate is proposing from a tenant perspective. I believe it was all supposed to be Northgate, but the applicant could respond to that a little better.
Okay, my next question is about the corn silos. So it mentions it's 17 feet tall, but do you happen to know the dimensions of the rest of the silo? I'm just curious about the gallons or how much corn it would hold and how it would be, how the corn would be fed into the silo?
The report mentions that it would be a pneumatic, the way it would go through the silo to inside the store. I do not know the quantities offhand. Probably a good applicant question.
So because the silo, the corn silo would be located outside, I'm worried, I'm kind of had the worry about possible attraction of rodents to the silo? Is that anything, is that a question that staff pondered over when they were reviewing the corn silo? That would be located outside?
It was not.
Okay, so, but, so we don't know for sure that rodents wouldn't be able to make their way inside from, into the silo from the outside as whole thing is, whole structure is outside, essentially?
Yeah, the whole idea of a silo is fairly new for staff, but I'm sure the applicant could chime in on that. But from the perspective of adding a potential condition for that, it doesn't sound like a bad one to me at all.
Okay. So the patio areas, I believe there's several. I've lost track of how many there are, but there's a few patio areas that are attached to the building. And then, I think, an indoor seating area, yeah, seating area for people who buy food and drink and as well as the outdoor seating area. So would alcohol consumption be allowed on all of those seating areas, including the outside patios and outside seating area that would be replacing the 16 parking spaces?
Hi, Commissioner Vivar. They would be permitted in the outdoor areas, but only in certain hours of operation, which are 11:00 a.m., I believe, to 11:00 p.m., with the last call being at 10:30.
So by all the areas, that includes the outdoor area where the parking lot spaces are, right?
Correct.
So I guess in theory, nothing would stop somebody from buying alcohol, sitting out in the patio area, and then just walking off down Wilson.
Well, the alcohol would be sold in conjunction with food.
Okay.
So they would have their meal. And then when they're done, they would exit through the main entrance.
That is part of the conditions as well.
So does this mean the, any alcohol from the puesto, the alcohol and spirits puesto would have to be sold in conjunction when food, it wouldn't just be able to sell?
So any alcohol sold from the spirits puesto is for off-site.
Oh, I see, okay. So that's not for in-store onsite consumption?
Correct, Commissioner Vivar. So there is a bar and a restaurant and various kiosks, as you're aware of, that sell, you know, different dishes. So the idea is that they work in concert with one another. Family would go in, they would all pick their favorite items. The parents might, you know, purchase some beverages. The kids would get their own, you know, juices. And then they would go out to the dining, outdoor dining patio area, eat family style, and then leave.
Right.
And then, oh, sorry, Commissioner Vivar, but while at the center, if they wanted to do regular grocery shopping afterwards, they could, and they'd pick up their produce and their vegetables. And then if mom and pop wanted to go and buy some tequila for the night, then they would go into the puesto. They would purchase this, you know, their alcoholic spirits. It would be bagged, I believe, in that designated area, sort of like when you're at the airport, you know? And then they'd get the receipt and they'd walk out with their purchased spirits. But it wouldn't be something that they could purchase and then consume onsite.
Right. So the, but the alcohol consumption taking place onsite, sold by the food establishments areas, people wouldn't, I'm guessing or assuming, be allowed to just walk off with their beer can into the store as they shopped?
No, that's why there's, there will be security at the main entrance and exit to monitor the alcoholic consumption responsibly onsite.
Regarding the music and sort of piggybacking off of some of Commissioner Zick's questions, so from what I heard in your response to Commissioner Zick, we don't have a decibel metric that we would be monitoring for, I guess, what would be too high. So we don't have a sort of decibel sound threshold for, you know, if they were to go over that threshold for the live music, that they would be in violation of their live music permit?
We actually do have a decibel that we have to stay within. It's based on the city's noise ordinance. But one of the conditions, I like previously mentioned, was essentially that the live entertainment could not be audible off-site. So that's a little bit more restrictive than even what our current requirements are for noise standards. Because the noise standard does allow for a little noise, whereas the live entertainment would not be allowed to be audible off-site.
So I guess off-site in, again, and sort of following-
Off the property.
Right, off, following up on sort of what Commissioners Zick had asked about earlier. So if, so somebody walking down Wilson shouldn't be able to hear the live music as the double doors opened and closed, right?
Correct.
So, okay, and then regarding live music, are we defining live music as like musical groups that are amplified or non-amplified? And would DJs count as live music?
So the condition is live entertainment?
Live entertainment.
Yeah, so, but from the perspective of the types of music that are played there, we could, the city is allowed to offer conditions or require conditions based on volume, but we would not be allowed to like regulate the type of music per se, like one band versus another or even three, the amount of people that are within a band. That's not, that's not something that's within our scope.
And then so I guess if a DJ was part of live entertainment, no matter whatever number of speaker systems they had, they wouldn't be able to go over that music or that sound threshold for the decibels allowed for the permit?
Both, yeah, the audible off-site and then also the city's noise standards. From the perspective of Wilson Street, there's more than likely considerable ambient noise from the roads out there. So that probably would not be an issue. And really where staff's considerations were focused were the residential located behind the property.
Right, so would the employee manning the audio kind of listening devices or whatever you want to call them, would they be monitoring those for the duration of live entertainment events?
Generally, that would be the intent of where I believe the noise study was concluding that they would have these monitors out there when those events are occurring and the doors are opening and closing. And then also in general, the noise study was a, was a, if you read it, it's a growth. And what I mean by that is, the first part of it was based on the potential live entertainment outside of, outside in the patio areas. outside in the patio areas. And that subsequently changed towards the later part of the analysis because staff had concerns about having live entertainment out on the patio. And, um, we also, we also advised the, um, applicant that, um, we wanted to have some windows within the area so people could see the vitality going on in the patio area. So that was one of staff's recommendations also. So, um, ba- basically you can see that, um, in the analysis of the noise consultant, they, they run several scenarios. And, um, one, and each one of the scenarios has different, uh, noise projections or anticipated noise volumes that trigger around the, um, use of the outdoor patio area specifically. And, um, under the scenario where there was, um, a patio area, an eight-foot wall with glass, four feet high above a four-foot wall, so it wouldn't just be a total eight-foot wall, but there are some portions of the patio that are completely eight feet, especially with regards to, um, the wall facing the residential. There would not be an exceedance of the city's noise standards based on the, um, on the study. There's also, uh, and Chris mentioned it in the report earlier on, with the original master plan, there was a wall that was required to be developed on the edge of the property between the residential areas in that back area, based on the potential noise impacts from deliveries. And, and there was also some conditions that stay with this project with regards to when the hours of delivery and, um, loading and unloading can occur. Sorry to go along on that one.
Oh, no, no, thank you for your thorough response, um, so. So if the, in the, in the scenario that whatever live entertainment would, uh, go over the sound, um, threshold or I'm also guessing the, sort of the people in the patio areas of sort of, you know, they're sitting out there and talking and, and that sort of, um, noise from people gathered around or the music, or the live entertainment were to go over the allowed thresholds, would, would it then be the, the sound monitor employees' responsibility to somehow walk over and make whatever is causing the noise, uh, sort of lower their noise output?
Correct, Commissioner Vivar, and, um, I'd recommend asking the applicant, uh, the question about the types of music. But from our previous conversations, they did mention that they only plan on having acoustic type of music. I would just verify that they do, that they do still plan on only having acoustic type of music, that there wouldn't be any, um, this is for the live entertainment. There wouldn't be any speakers or anything like that, amplified music. And in regards to the type of music that'd be outside, it's all ambient. So it's, you know, it's, it would be something easy to monitor because you set the highest decibel on, you know, the, uh, audio sound system and it, and as long as nobody, um, you know, modifies it, it remains at that decibel. But those are all great questions, Commissioner Vivar, and I do recommend that you do, um, bring that up to the applicant while they're here, just so that you have some reassurance as to the different types of music that they do propose in the future.
So in theory, the planning commission could add, uh, to the noise, uh, condition that, uh, amplified music would be, uh, not permitted on the stage, in theory?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and then my last question is about the outdoor patio seating area. Will there be any concrete bollards or anything else protecting the people that are, uh, gathered in the outdoor seating area from vehicles?
On the west side of the building?
Yeah, or, no, the, um, the south part of the building, the, the, and I'm referring to the parking area or the, uh, outdoor seating area that's replacing the 16 vehicle parking spaces.
Got it, so there is a four-foot concrete block wall and then above that, uh, four-foot glass, uh, dual-pane glass window, um, on the side facing the Wilson. And then on the two other sides, there's a con, uh, eight-foot concrete block wall. But there are no additional bollards, um, because they, they still want to, uh, provide some landscaping. And, um, and so to answer your question, there's no additional bollards.
So would the four-foot concrete wall be cantilevered? As in, would it be in the ground, say, two, three feet down to kind of prevent it from being sort of toppled over if it were to be hit by a vehicle or something?
The, the footing detail is a great question for the architect while they're here today.
And, um, okay, I think that answers, I think that answers all my questions. So thank you, uh, both for your time and I'll try to remember my questions for the architect. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Vivar. We have Commissioner Zick and Commissioner Vivar coming out with all the good questions right out the gate. Uh, Commissioner Rojas, do you have any questions?
None that haven't already been asked, thank you.
Vice Chair.
I also don't have any questions right now. Thank you for your presentation.
Okay, thank you, and I do have several questions before we come to a short break. Some of these might be a little bit repetitive, um, but I just want to kind of double check. So are patrons free to walk around the store with a beer? Or are they, I mean theoretically, are they confined to the dining areas? Or are they kind of in reality allowed to walk around the store with a beer in their hand?
So in, in re, in theory, they're confined to those areas. They would purchase their onsite alcoholic beverage, you know, purchase their food. They would be, uh, you know, maybe there would be some type of lid. You know, we, we have discussed that with, um, with the Northgate team. Similar that, you know, there, there would be a lid and possibly, uh, some type of sticker to conceal the opening for the straw. And then once they have their food and their beverage, they'd go have a seat in the designated area. And, um, you know, the onsite security would watch them, um, and then they'd consume their beverages. Whether they would buy their food first and then their alcohol, or their alcohol first and then their food, and whether the bartender would ask them, you know, have you already ordered food? And where will you be seating? That is yet to be determined by the Northgate team on how they want to manage, uh, you know, onsite alcohol consumption. But the idea is that they do, they would have staff to make sure that it's consumed responsibly and with meals. And, um, they'd be able to provide all those receipts and that data to ABC annually. Because, um, under the type of license that they're proposing, the 47, um, the alcohol should only be a fraction of the revenue generated at the store. The majority should be for, uh, you know, for food, so it's just ancillary use.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wald, um, Director.
A little to add in on that, and thanks, Chris. From a perspective of roaming the store, it's a little bit, this is a little bit different use, so I could understand why the questions would come from, it's, it's an easier review when it's a patio area or a confined area and the ABC controls it by fencing or some type of limitation. They actually open it beyond fencing. As long as it's a limited area, that's the ABC's definition for when they're requiring limitations on where alcohol services. Um, in this situation, alcohol and food service would be limited to those areas because the whole store is not a restaurant, the whole store is not a bar. Um, those, otherwise it would have to be parked that way. So in this situation, um, that, that, there may or may not be, um, areas around the tables on the inside of the, um, of the store, depending on the ABC requirements. But certainly from the perspective of eating and walking around with beer around the store, that would not be allowed.
Okay, thank you, Director, and I think to follow up on that question, did we determine exactly how many security guards or dedicated staff would be observing those areas where alcohol is consumed?
No, that wasn't something that we really got into the, um, to the details with regards to security. Just after speaking with the police, they felt that the security that was being provided was adequate.
Uh, just by way of the TV cameras or?
My assumption, yeah, and, and preliminary discussions with the applicant, so they, they went into details. But we could add a minimum, um, I just wouldn't know what that number would be based on this one-off type proposal.
So here's the reason why I'm asking the question is if there is only one security guard who is there for purposes of making sure that nothing gets stolen, but their primary function is to make sure people aren't walking out of the area with their beer, then they're not watching other areas like the front door. So it then becomes a question of, well, how many security guards do we have? Or how many dedicated staff do we have for different functions with this particular use? So I don't know if it, I don't, you don't have to answer that if you don't want me, perhaps the applicant can answer that later.
No, and, and I hope that the applicant does have some type of a plan, and my assumption is that they do from speaking with him. Uh, again, this is more or less a one-off, um, type of a scenario. So we didn't really get into the amount of security that was being provided, just that they would provide enough, more or less. Maybe enough is not enough.
I just want to know what enough is.
From a condition perspective, so, um, I, I mean, it, just speaking out loud, it might be the option of the commission to entertain, um, one security or one staff person per area of dining.
If we can make a quick note of that when we circle back to the, um, that might be a discussion point. Thank you, Director Dropkin and Mr. Aldana. Move on to my next question, regarding major amendment to the master plan PA 2303. Is the major amendment to the master plan, uh, applicable to all projects henceforth? Or just specifically to this project?
Specifically to Building C, Northgate, oh, sorry. Specifically to Building C, the Northgate, uh, establishment.
Okay, so, um, just to repeat it, this major amendment to the master plan will not apply to other projects who are seeking a similar deviation?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And, um, as far as the noise monitors go, do we have more information? Are these 24-hour recordings that are going to be on the property line?
Just stepping back into your last question, I just want to make sure we answered it correctly. Were, when we were referring to it would not apply to other project areas of the site, like for instance, Home Depot or other properties that are, because it is broken up into several properties, the area above. That's what, that's what staff was referring to. From a perspective of, does the use, um, hold for the approval for that specific area, which Chris mentioned, um, Building C, that would, that would stay, that would, that would continue with the land.
Okay, um, but we're, we're not talking about a major amendment to the general plan applied citywide?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure of that, okay, um, thank you, Director. Getting back to the data that are derived from the noise monitors, um, are those 24-hour recordings, are those sent wirelessly to the city? Do we know anything about the thresholds that once they're met, it triggers a call to the applicant to take mitigation measures? What do we know?
Typically, our noise ordinance and, and most, um, city noise ordinance is what they are, they're based on is a noise complaint of an issue they're reactive, they're reactionary. Uh, in this situation, it wouldn't be any different. We would, we would react to, um, noise concerns. In this situation, one of the requirements is that, um, after construction and I'm assuming during our operation, they would have at least one, um, study where the acoustical engineer would go in and review for that. That's what I recall reading in the acoustical analysis. Again, it might be a better question for the, um, for the applicant. But based on your question from what staff's, um, review would look like, it would look like an issue where, or a situation where if there was a complaint, we would go and investigate. Um, we have our own noise monitors or we have a, um, access to consultants with noise monitors and we would make sure that it was consistent with either the conditions of approval or the, um, noise standards or both.
So theoretically, the, if I can just paint a picture real quick and then I'll ask a question. So we're going to have continuous noise data filtered back to the city. Theoretically, we're going to have, uh, a software program that will look for different levels either in DBA or in LEQ. And we will see that theoretically, there may be an exceedance, but there would be no, theoretically, no action taken unless there is a complaint that's launched. At which point, you would go back into the records to look at that particular event to see if the complaint matches up with the event as far as the data show?
I, I think, um, theoretically, that might be true with the added, um, possibility of the applicant who actually controls the noise monitoring being able to control an exceedance as well. Um, but from a staff perspective and a city perspective, uh, they're, they're complaint-based.
Complaint-based, okay. But the city would have, in, as far as this application goes, we would be able to theoretically see the data at any point? We could access those data?
Yeah, we have added that as a condition, but it certainly would be something that would be reasonable from an ask perspective to make sure that they're in compliance with what the noise standards. Again, I would, uh, prefer that the noise or the applicant who is, um, speaking for the noise consultant kind of respond to that, that type of question of what kind of access we would or we wouldn't have. From a technological perspective, I don't completely know.
Okay, um, I, I think just to keep track of all the asks along the way, maybe we could write that one down and we'll revisit that as well, if you don't mind. Thank you, Director Dropkin. So going on to page 19 and 20 of the parking study. So just after, if you, if it's in your packet, it's just after the sound study. If you go to 19, 20. We're going to see, um, two bar charts. And. Uh, yeah, Anna, do you mind if we pull the slide up with the, with the bar charts, please? Page, yeah, there we go, it's beautiful. So is what you're asking today in terms of a major amendment to the master plan PA 2303, preemptively waiving the parking requirements for any retail use within the shopping center that comes in hereafter as well? Because there are, and the reason why I'm asking, just so you know, is that there are a couple vacant spots there already. We don't know what those future uses are going to be or if that is going to exceed the current parking minimums for the site. So are we effectively putting the cart in front of the horse is my question?
So the, the way the city's parking standards work and, um, they're different for a retail center than they are for a individual use. And based on this center, it, the analysis was based on, and it is indicated in the report this way as well, that it, it anticipates the parking demand for the whole center in their floor areas, not based on a specific use, but based on a retail activity or a restaurant activity or a, a hardware store, whatever the activity is going on in that area. That was what the retail, um, shared parking demand, peak demand, um, requirements are for, that, that were analyzed, put into analysis for the study. But getting back to where I was going with that, um, the, the city's parking requirements for a, uh, shopping center, again, are different than from individual uses. From the specific perspective is we calculate peak parking demand for all the uses combined, not just like us, what we have in the code for an individual use. It's a requirement.
And, and is, is that to say that we've already calculated unknown businesses that may be locating into vacant spots in that shopping center?
Yeah, that's correct because it was based on a total floor area.
Okay, so even if those retail, say, future retail sites are higher individually than what is projected for that center, so let's say for example, retail cannabis, right? Retail cannabis comes in based on, you know, floor area ratio and we've been talking about it, what, 24 times now up to this point? Do we know that the, the demand for parking is going to be higher with certain retail uses versus others? Or are we effectively taking an average for those vacant sites?
Yeah, it's actually more detailed than that, um, and what it does is it, when, it, the way that our, the city reviews for uses in a retail shopping center is that if it doesn't contribute to, uh, intensification, it would be allowed use from the perspective of a parking demand. from the perspective of a parking demand. If it did, like for instance, if it was a gym or a restaurant or some other type of use that requires greater parking typically than a, than a normal retail operation, then we would do a study. In this situation, this study suggested that there was a fair amount of surplus parking after calculating all the floor area and the uses within that center.
Yeah, and I think I remember that too. It makes me feel like I'm arguing just to argue. But I appreciate, I appreciate you entertaining the questions.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question because the, and I've had this discussion before about the city's parking requirements. The city's parking requirements are a different level than most cities are. I think there are cities that have shopping center and shared parking demand calculations, but this city does use it and it's good. It gives, allows uses to come in that aren't always, would be allowed in a situation where we're looking at myopically one parking demand for each use. And it also allows us to consider peak periods of different uses within the center that might allow for flexibility in some parking for their peak demand. Like if it was just, the restaurant was just open at night and it didn't, and so and other uses were closed, like the dental office was closed, but next pizza was open.
Sure. And I, I think part of the reason for asking this question relates to some of the wider discourse that we've had here on the dais about, well, you know, what is really the required parking? Are we going to be making potential changes in the future to keep things, like you say, flexible to, you know, decrease, increase? It's still an outstanding question that we continue to, to litigate, that I very much look forward to. So with that said, I don't think I have any more questions, so I'm happy to open it up again, starting with Commissioner Rojas. Do you have any, any questions, Vice Chair?
Couple of quick questions for staff and I'm remaining with my other questions for the applicant. So that condition of approval number 26 that talks about the quarterly gross sales of alcohol versus food and indicates that that report needs to be made available to the director, Economic and Development Services on Demand. Is this kind of like the sound complaint issue? Is this a reactive thing or a proactive thing in terms of ensuring that the sales of alcohol don't exceed the sale of food?
React.
Reactive, okay. And then related to that, the sale of food in the entire market, correct? Not food that people are buying to eat while they're there?
I'm sorry, could you rephrase the question?
When we're talking about the gross sales of food, are we referring to all food products sold in the market or food that is sold for consumption on site?
Yeah, the areas identified in blue on the, or the areas identified not in the area, because the areas in that chart originally said, most of it was colored yellow. And those areas are not considered food service areas, but still for the sales of food. So that's the way it's really differentiated.
That's what 26 is referring to, is food that's purchased and eaten on site.
Correct.
Okay. My next question, and it kind of relates back to this corn silo question. I couldn't tell from the drawing. I'm wondering about the width of the sidewalk in front of the store, in front of the two outdoor patios that are on the west side, the sidewalk width outs adjacent to that silo. Is that something you have looked at and ensured the sidewalk is wide enough so people aren't walking into the parking lot?
So, and then Chris will look a little bit deeper here, but generally what's occurring out in the front and there, besides the silo and the two outdoor seating areas, what the, the two outdoor seating areas are taking, are replacing the cart areas. The silo is new. Other than that, there is no changes that are being proposed to the existing tenancy. So I, with that in mind, I don't think staff put a whole lot of critical review, but maybe Chris could add to that.
Commissioner Zick, that's definitely something the architect will have to demonstrate on plans once they're in the plan check process. That's when we were, we will really begin to require them to call out dimensions. Public Works will look into the distance of sidewalks. Transportation might have some feedback as well. In this phase, it's, it's conceptual, but it's coming soon if they were to get to plan check. That's when we would do that review.
Okay, and my next to last question. You know, we, we say in condition of approval number 31 and other places that the music entertainment should not be audible outside the, outside the building, outside the premises. How do we square, not audible, meaning you can't hear it? How do you square that requirement with our code requirement that allows sound up to 55 dB? How do you square those two?
It's, they're unequal and one's more restrictive.
Got it, okay. Then my last question, do we prohibit or allow, say, somebody wants to hold a quinceañera inside the store, can they schedule and reserve a, a night to hold a party there?
I don't believe that they're doing any special events.
I'm not asking if they're planning on it. Would we allow it?
I, I want to recall, I recall that we did have a special event condition in there. They, if they would, did, if it's not in there, the conditions that is, there is, there is the code that allows for special events under certain situations and we look at them individually.
Okay, thank you. That's it for my questions.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners Zick. Anyone else? All right. Director Dropkin, Mr. Aldana, thank you so much for your patience and thank you to my fellow commissioners for a very, very intriguing line of questions. Appreciate it. So at this point, it's been a little while. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break and we'll see you back here. Welcome back to the Planning Commission meeting of May 8, 2023, 2023. I call the meeting to order and we are now at the point of opening the public hearing and I will ask the applicant and the applicant's representative if they are present. And if you would, please come to the podium and state your name for the record, either side, if you'd like. Can you please state your name for the record? Let us know if you've read the staff report and the conditions of approval and do you agree to them?
Good evening. My name is Joshua Gonzalez with the North Gate family, third generation. Happy to be here. Thank you for the opportunity and very happy to be in Costa Mesa. I have read and I agree.
Okay, thank you, sir. The floor is yours if you'd like to make a presentation.
My name is Kevin Lay with Lay Architecture, representing North Gate Markets. Any questions regarding the design, technicality of the project? I heard from Commissioners Zick, I'll address some of your concerns to start. Initially, you asked about the security of the alcohol, how is it being monitored? ABC is very strict in terms of how we operate our two separate licenses. The licenses we're applying for is a type 21 that allows you to purchase the alcohol and take it off-site to consume at home. The 47 is to eat with food, whether that's within the patio spaces and that's monitored and secured by the store and the personnel that are within the store. You asked about the areas that are outlined in plan, the teal or blue-colored areas. Those are drawn to scale. Those were to the benefit for the parking analysis. But to your question about whether or not a chair can move and be added to the scheme, that would increase the parking count to that measure. In terms of the dining experience, I think they're not fixed seating. They're able to move around as long as we maintain within that area, that square footage. Your next question's regarding the outdoor patio and the exterior egress doors. Those are emergency exits for use and they should be unlocked during business hours. They are with a panic hardware device. If that is pushed, it alarms patrons within the store, patrons within the dining area to safely egress. And because of the amount of occupants within that outdoor patio, we have to maintain two exit doors. You also asked about the two pair of double doors that open adjacent to that patio. That's the doors, to clarify, leading from the store outside or were you referring to the trash enclosure that is adjacent on the opposite side?
It did not look like a trash enclosure.
Okay. The only clarification I had was that there are two pairs of doors. If you're looking at the plan attached to the building, there are a pair of double swing doors that is, again, used for emergency egress from the store in the event of an emergency. The pair of doors that are directly across from that are for the Wells Fargo trash enclosure. I believe you had some comments or questions related to noise. I'm happy to hear those. You asked about whether or not the restaurant will have waiters and waitresses. They, they will. That's the component that is at the front right corner of the building. The experience of walking from the market, you'll be transported through a revolving door. But prior to that, there is a, a stand where, like a dais like this, that you will be greeted and be escorted into the restaurant with waiters and waitresses. The, you mentioned about the noise consultant with the calibrated equipment. Those will be monitored by the noise consultant initially to calibrate to make sure that any of the decibels, whether coming from the market and it, and directly across the truck drive aisle at the rear with another monitored device as well. Our, our goal is not to have any noise transmit to the adjacent neighbors. I think your last question regarding the corn silo, we have to maintain an accessible path of travel between Wilson Street and connecting to all the patrons within the shopping center. So in our plans, we are denoting a accessible path of travel. There shouldn't be any excuse for patrons to walk within circulation paths of vehicles. Commissioner Vivar, you had questions relative to the operator of those two licenses I mentioned earlier. Those will be owned and maintained by North Gate Markets. You asked about the rodents and pest control, which is a maintenance and operational characteristic that North Gate Markets takes very highly. It is not our intent to invite any of those pests through. This corn silo is roughly eight by eight square and 16 foot tall, contained sealed stainless steel. It is pneumatically pumped from that silo through a motor that exists within the market. From there, the noise carries it through to the tortillaria, which is just to the center of the store and plan. You also had a question related to the footings of the outdoor block wall. Those are fixed at least two feet down for an eight-foot-high block wall. Any kind of vehicle entering that space, they would have to come up on the public right-of-way, six-inch curb, enter the landscape berm. And then we are also installing fixed landscape planters before getting to that exterior block wall. Chairman Erith, you had asked regarding security guards and to that, operationally, we will have security on site. Safety is a number one concern for the entire market. We don't like any kind of loitering. Issues with overconsumption of alcohol is not tolerated. The conditions within ABC are quite exhaustive in, in terms of how we can operate and so we must follow those and to be able to securely consume alcohol on site, but also to off-sale alcohol to the public. I'm available for any additional questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Lay. I appreciate the follow-up. I'll go ahead and start out. You mentioned security, but no number just yet in terms of personnel. Do you have a rough idea of what that might be?
The onsite security is limited to one.
To one.
Personnel. The, during peak hours of, say, the weekdays and weekends, they can increase that number. The motto that I've seen in, in going to these stores, we have done quite a number of, of North Gate Markets in the past and it's an issue or, let's say it's a, he's, he sees it or if you see something, say something. And that goes with all of the check registers, cashiers, kitchen staff, employees that are also added security to the store. But the onsite loss prevention and maintenance onsite is limited to, to the one, with the exception of peak demand requiring at least two.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Lay. Another question here, just for clarity, on the, along the property at the access point to the outside patio, what you're proposing is not one pair of double doors, but two pairs of double doors, right? To the point where if, if one pair of double doors opens and there's live music going on, all of a sudden, the outside area is flooded with sound theoretically, right?
Yes.
So was there any discussion about having two pairs of double doors so that at least, most of the time, at least one of them will be closed?
I understand, like, similar to a vestibule where...
Yeah.
That, that was not discussed as part of the initial design. I believe the sound that will be generating from the market, from the live entertainment, the music will be addressed and attenuated by the block wall, fully grounded CMU masonry walls with the vinyl mass-absorbing fabric attached to those walls as well as the, the monitors that we will gauge that we do not exceed the allowable decibels for the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lay. I may have one or two more questions here, if you could just bear with me. I may circle back to my next question after I can frame it. So we can move on to other commissioners if you have any other comments. Commissioner Zick?
Thank you. Was it Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Did I pronounce that right?
Mr. Lay, yeah.
Mr. Lay, thank you. So you indicated there are waitresses, waiters for the restaurant, but not for food service on the patio, correct?
No.
So people get their food inside, they walk out to the patio and enjoy it there?
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming the market itself will be open until... I'm assuming the market itself will be open until 11:00 PM every night, correct? Not just the food service, not just live entertainment, not just the patio, but the entire store will be open until 11:00 PM every night?
That's correct.
I was curious about the thought that went into locating the sliding door to the patio immediately adjacent to the soundstage where live entertainment is, given the concern about noise migrating out to the neighborhood. You don't even have a wall between the stage and the double doors or vestibule, as the chair has suggested. So tell me what your thought was about that layout, since you basically have free rein over the layout.
The... That's a great question. Anytime you're walking through the market initially, any market, you should be greeted by a loud noise. That's the air curtain fan that is making sure that there's no flies or pests that can enter the market, enter the areas that have food being cooked. Similar in this situation, there will be air curtains that do generate a little bit of noise there. I don't believe that will be more so than the live music that goes on. These doors are cued to auto-close within motion sensor of people passing through that. So I think the short bursts of sounds may be similar to, say, traffic on Wilson Street. When you hear a honk on a car, that is an audible sound that is striking at first, but as a car passes through, that sound dissipates.
So staying on the subject of your layout and the stage location, if you're in the restaurant, you can't even see the stage. So I was curious why the restaurant wouldn't be as important, a place for the stage and the entertainment to be visible and enjoyed?
I think there's different types, and Joshua with Northgate can talk more passionately about the layout and operational characteristics. But my understanding is that based upon the types of eating, meaning there's the fine dining portion to the market, which exists in that corner, isolated, independent of any of the music, any of the activity, the shopping experience that happens outside. Think of Grand Central Market in downtown L.A. You have separate restaurants that are enclosed, but then you also have the open-air socializing within the market that you're able to enjoy that music, hear the audio, and have two separate experiences.
Okay. Approximately how many employees will be on staff at any one time?
At any one time, anywhere from 150 to 175.
So a lot of people. That's more than I thought. So you're aware from your plans that there's approximately 15 to 20 parking stalls behind the building? I'm assuming those would be used for employees?
Yes, sir. And in total, I believe we were at about 90, including an area in the back that we are trying to work in agreement to be able to park during the allowed hours.
All right. Sound media fusion. On page six of their report, they talked about the frequency range that typical human ears are responsive to, 20,000 to 20,000 megahertz. Any audio file would be familiar with that range. I'm curious more specifically about the physical response to bass. The physical vibrations of the bass sound that a person may not hear with their ear but may feel with their body. Could you tell me how it is that you're intending to deal with that?
That's actually one of the conditions in itself as part of the sound report. If you look closer to the end, there's item three where it states DJ-type music contains a lot of low-frequency bass, would likely cause challenges, and ideally should not be used unless operated at a very low level. So bass is a concern that the consultant had, and similarly for us, too, that we would turn that decibel range and adjust the bass levels lower.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then the condition of approval, well, page 17 of this report. Wait, it might not be page 17. Yes, page 17 it is. Item number five, where it says that the venue should employ a person to be responsible for maintaining proper sound levels. I'm not quite sure what they had in mind with that statement. It sounds like a full-time person, and I can't really imagine that you'd be staffing a full-time person that does nothing but stand there and adjust volume. But how are you responding to that recommendation? What's your approach?
I think at the... Similar to the operation of this space, you need an IT person to do sound check to be able to, for these events, make sure that everything is working smoothly for the use of having entertainment. And this isn't every night. It's based on the permit that we have to apply for, that we would employ that person, retain them for the events, to make sure to monitor, to check the decibel levels, to monitor the equipment, and be able to keep within the confines of our space.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And we've got audiovisual people behind here, actually, working.
Very, very good acoustics in here.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. That's it for my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. I'll go ahead and follow up with a couple of questions from earlier. One being, can you tell us a little bit about the kind of waste diversion program that you may have at your other stores, specifically your organics waste diversion program? Because if you're going to be going through silos of corn, that's a lot of organics right there. So maybe you can talk about that a little bit, please?
Sure. We do a modeling for production and also for prep. For example, with corn, we have detailed production schedules to ensure we're producing the right amount of product by daypart, and ensuring that not only does that help reduce waste, but it also helps improve quality and freshness. So those are some of the systems that we utilize to make sure to reduce waste.
So I'm under the impression that you have whole ears of corn, that you're going to be processing fresh to make the tortillas, correct?
It's dry corn.
Oh.
And it's in the silo. So the dry corn is boiled.
I see.
And once it's boiled and soft and supple, then we grind it to make a masa, then bake to make tortillas.
Gotcha. That makes a lot more sense than whole ears of corn.
Yes.
Appreciate that. And then, secondly, lastly, on page 16 of Sound Media Fusion's report, at the bottom under number two, it says, "If the venue does experience noise intrusion into the housing areas, a wall such as this and as simulated herein may be required. Wall acoustic barrier that is at a minimum eight feet tall and then in per inch, the higher, the better." So what is, after we see the different noise studies for the different heights or simulations of walls, why settle on just eight feet when the contractor, the sound engineer recommended higher, the better? So why not 10 or 12 and so forth?
With the noise that will be emanating from this patio, these are patrons sitting down, enjoying their coffee, enjoying their meals. We don't believe that the noise would even constitute having a wall. Within having a barrier space to contain the alcohol, contain patrons from not wandering outside of those doors, we agreed to install the eight feet, which is already attenuating the sound. I think the barrier of creating a wall higher and higher is not the design aesthetic that we want to present to the community, nor is it something that I think would be perceived from a pedestrian level, walking along the sidewalk or being a patron within the patio itself. I think the eight-foot is already a comfortable height that one will already address the sound and still be aesthetically attainable.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lee. I appreciate that. I think that's all for me, and at least for the time being. And Commissioner Vivar?
Just a couple of questions. Thank you for your responses to Commissioner Zick and Chairman Erth's questions. Answered some of mine. You did mention in responding to Commissioner Zick that you would be maintaining that path of travel on the sidewalk where the silo will be located. So I'm curious if you know what the width of that sidewalk will be with the silo?
Off memory, we're not exceeding beyond the existing cart corral wall, that it was existing there today. But if I had to piece that dimension, I want to say beyond the four feet of the required accessible path of travel. Hold me to a number. I'd say between six to eight feet wide.
Okay. Right. ADA requirement there. And regarding music, so based on your responses, will... I kind of have the idea that you will have amplified music, but earlier, the city staff member believed that you'd only be having sort of acoustical music. So will you, will any kind of acoustical music, musical groups be amplified? And would, and do you foresee having, for example, DJs at your stage area?
We definitely don't intend to have DJs. The vision for this is to have a family environment where music is played for the enjoyment of families, and we don't plan on having, you know, deeply amplified music. It's really to be able to have a unique experience while you're dining with your family.
But, for example, if there's a mariachi playing, will the mariachi be amplified, or will the sound from their trumpets, violins, et cetera, be the only noise coming from that musical group?
Yeah. I think depending on what your guidance might be, we could go either way. Our priority is to ensure that's an experience that is, that is not one that exceeds, you know, what might be nice for a family to enjoy. So a very loud experience for somebody that's eating is not one that's desirable anyway. So that's not our intention.
Yeah. And I guess kind of the reason I ask as well is I attended your community meeting, which was very well-attended, the April 22nd one, and you had a live music group there, but they were amplified. And I had a hard time hearing what some of your Gonzales family members and some of the, your staff was saying when we were talking. So I'm just, that's why I was kind of thinking about, you know, will, will the musical groups be amplified? Because if they are, sometimes that can get just loud to the point where you can't have a normal conversation with somebody in front of you. But you don't foresee that happening then at the store, is what you're saying?
That is correct.
Regarding the alcohol that will be sold at the food and beverage establishments on site, what kind of alcohol do you foresee selling with food?
What's important to us is to be able to pair the authentic foods with authentic pairings. We believe that Mexican-style lagers will be present, also wines from Baja and cocktails.
Would you foresee having hard liquor like tequila or mezcal?
Yes, but mostly in the form of cocktails.
But so not like shots, for example?
That is not our intention.
No? And so regarding the live music events, if you do have music, you would foresee yourself, for example, shutting down the music like an hour before the end of the store close time? Or do you foresee having kind of evening live music or live entertainment events?
We would believe that about 30 minutes before closing would be ideal.
So up to 10:30? Right.
That would be ideal for us, yes.
Okay. And then so about the alcohol spirits puestos, so that alcohol would be, is it correct that that alcohol purchased there would be consumed off-site and not on-site?
Do you want me to take it or... Oh. That is correct for off-site.
Okay. So the only alcohol being purchased and consumed on-site is the, is alcohol sold with food? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Under the type 47, correct.
And so somebody wouldn't just be able to order themselves a beer without ordering, for example, tacos?
We want to make sure that people are coming in and enjoying, you know, a meal and, you know, a nice beer or wine. I mean, that's the intention behind, really, the concept we're creating.
I think that might be on my questions, so thank you for taking the time to answer them. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Rojas?
I do. You said something key right now, which has been a question that's been hovering over my mind, so I want to make sure I have clarity on this. Obviously, the key, one of the key components here is noise pollution and how we're going to control that. We would have what it seems to be a verbal commitment from you to make sure that that is always kept on an acoustic level. It seems to me to be that the concept is to have, create a direct environment, not something that's going to be going out the doors. My question is this. Of the Northgates that I've seen in the past, this seems to be the first one where you're serving restaurants with alcohol and that kind of thing. Is that the case, or are there other Northgates that have been run with this particular model? Or is this a groundbreaking operation?
Under type 21, we do. In this type of concept, we've never done. We're very excited about it. We think it's going to be a very unique concept that highlights regional foods of Mexico, Latin America. So it'll be the first time we do something to this extent.
Right. So that's essentially, this whole concept is a new concept, that you guys are trying to go into a different experience, you know, à la Grand Central Market in downtown L.A., so to speak.
Yes, sir. Correct.
Okay. That's the only question that I have, but I know some of the, well, I'm sorry, you wanted to say something?
Just to add on that, this concept is not far different than most markets that operate with the type 21 liquor, off-sale liquor license. They're typically paired with a type 86 liquor license as well, which allows you to consume alcohol on-site, monitored. But that concept of being able to walk into a store vis-à-vis your Whole Foods or Costco, to be able to taste and try alcohol beverages within a market space that primarily commits to retail. So the concept of having alcohol within, consuming within, isn't so different than the type of license we're applying for, except that we must have food to eat with that, and there's no limitation on the amounts.
Understood. Yeah, that's, again, I wanted to make clear, because I'm looking at the images, looking at the images, looking at the layout, listening to all the questions that are being asked. I want to understand the concept here, so that we all are very clear on it. But I, that's all that I have. We'll see what kind of limitations we might need to impose, but I don't, I don't know that we are there yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rojas. Commissioner Zick?
Thank you. Just two questions. I wanted to follow up on the question that the chair asked regarding the, what I understood the question to be about the recording of sound levels. So the question is this. If the city received a complaint about a sound level from the prior night, would staff be able to show up the next day, and would you have a recording, some strip chart, maybe, of what sound levels were for prior... of what sound levels were for prior, prior days, prior week, some period of time?
Yeah, the, the basis of the monitoring equipment is to be able to track that event. The consultant did recommend a number of proprietary equipment, softwares that could be utilized for that, one of which is SoundEer. So they're listening and it's recording the events of the previous nights, events that can be archived, digitally logged, to pair with any 311 or complaints that city might have.
And so you're fine having equipment that will maintain recording for some period of time?
Yes, similar to the security. We must maintain our video footage for police use. For that fact, the equipment is there in place. If, if there is an issue, we can monitor that.
The audio, okay. And then the second question, I would just want to make sure you didn't have any concern with my interest in prohibiting big-screen TVs from the patio area. You have no concern with that?
Ideally, we would have liked to be able to do so. If, if it's something that, that you believe that is not possible, you know, we, we would be willing to possibly not, not have it. But ideally, we would have liked to, yes.
Thank you for your answer.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for being here and answering these questions. I have a couple of quick questions on the Wilson patio. Let's see. Condition number seven, let's see. Well, we have a lot of conditions about the sound. Seems like we've covered it from every angle possible. Or maybe it's a different one that I was looking at. Oh, yeah, 38, sorry. Any wall gate or barrier proposed for the outdoor dining patio shall comply with Costa Mesa Municipal Code and Building Code and the project acoustical report. So if you go to the report, pages 16 and 17 of the report, I believe what we mean by that are the numbers. I guess it's kind of a question for staff. The numbers on page 16 and 17, that makes sense. But then, at the bottom of page 17, there's an addendum saying, okay, we have, we have a new design that wasn't really tested, so here's the recommendations based on that new design. And it has some pretty specific detail here. The glass will need to be laminated glass, a double-pane type construction, a metal framing, suitable for an outdoor environment. Do we need to enhance that condition to include those, or is that, I believe that's already covered in that condition?
Yeah, I, I feel like the acoustical conditions have, from a conditional perspective, have a lot of belt and suspender requirements. Especially with the requirement of the off-site acoustics, that really holds them to the fire, more or less. And I felt like that was, and from a conditional perspective, it seems to respond to any potential concerns that we have to react to.
And I, I wrote them down. We have like eight or so. And we're comfortable with, Commissioner Zick had a good point about TVs outside and potential cheering at World Cup games or something like that. Do we feel that those, those conditions would cover that sort of thing?
So I honestly did not foresee the World Cup. And I've been at a few of those, so I know what it, what happens. And I think that the comment from Commissioner Zick was more than appropriate, and I'll kick myself in the morning for not thinking that. And maybe I'll even give Commissioner Zick a call, let him kick me a little. But from that perspective, I'm trying to think of an imaginative or a creative condition to respond to that and still allow the applicant to have those televisions outside, or just only have the televisions on inside, or what have you. What I came to sort of conclude, at least in my own mind, was that, that off-site condition of no acoustical or noise really responded to that. If it becomes an issue from a complaint reactionary basis, it would be probably something that we could square away with, with the applicant. And we could even add some language, subject to the Director of Development Services, if it does become a problem, we could work out some other situations, similar to what we do with parking sometimes, and other projects.
Okay. I have one more question. I guess this is for staff, but also the applicant, feel free to chime in. Given that, this is, this is going to be, hopefully, a very popular place for dining, shopping, entertainment, and everything else you guys are doing. There's going to be hard liquor there, a lot of people are going to go there, hopefully, as patrons, to drink. And we're reducing the parking. So given all that, what are we doing as a city? What are we doing right now? What have we done? What are we doing in the future to ensure that it's safe, comfortable, and convenient for customers to get there without having to drive? It's kind of an open question for the applicant or our, our staff. I feel, I feel given, given, given the facts, given the, what we're thinking about right now, what we're considering, and this new use, that's a, that's a good question to be asking and planning for.
I, I would think we'd obviously promote means of transportation that you would be able to drink responsibly, know your limits. This being so close to residential areas, we would hope that patrons walk in lieu of driving, ride their bike, maybe. Maybe not a scooter, maybe not a bike. Be able to walk to the store, enjoy a beverage, enjoy a meal, and be able to safely return home. That, again, is our number one priority.
Okay. Are there any bike racks, is there any room for bike racks or a bike corral or anything onsite? This is, this site, not everybody, I didn't know this until, you know, a couple of years ago, but it's connected to a really good bike trail, a couple of really good bike trails that take you off-site all the way to Placentia, which, as I understand, is about to be improved with really nice bike lanes. So really connects half the city through good bike lanes. So it is potential in the next decade or so that a lot of patrons would be showing up that way.
Yes. Part of the Cal Green code that we're responsible for in submitting plans is making sure we have adequate, sometimes more abundance of onsite, short-term parking for bicycles, as well as long-term bicycle storage for, say, employees that are commuting to work. So there, within the overall shopping center, there is short-term and long-term bike parking.
Okay. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Chair. Any others?
Chairman, is it possible to make a comment on behalf of the applicant? I am part of the team.
Sure.
My name is Jill Wallace, and hopefully you've seen from the answers here that Northgate wants to be a good neighbor. In your agenda packet, we didn't talk about it today, but there is letters of support from the Chamber of Commerce, Travel Costa Mesa, ICI, the owner of the development, as well as Orange Coast College. I'd like to note that on Friday, Joshua and I met with the president of Orange Coast College, and the Northgate Market is interested in a partnership, a culinary partnership, with the students at Orange Coast. In addition, at this store, there are incubator kitchens, a first of its kind in the Northgate store range, and they're interested in working with local street vendors, local food proprietors who might be able to utilize these kitchens. So there's an economic development angle here with Northgate coming in to the community. In addition, the Northgate family, who has 44 stores in the Southland, they, in every city they are in, make a commitment to work with the educational system. They give scholarships throughout the year to students, and have already established a upcoming meeting with personnel at the Newport Mesa Unified School District. So I thought it was important, while we're talking about the technical nature of the store, and these are excellent questions tonight, that you've seen that they're committed to mitigating any negative impacts at the store. But more importantly, they're very interested in being entrenched in the Costa Mesa community. And these examples of the partnerships that I've talked about, I wanted to make sure they did not go unnoticed tonight. Travel Costa Mesa is ecstatic to think of this store, and Mr. Ross, you mentioned that it's new to its kind. It is. This will be a destination shopping center, a destination place for come and to celebrate the foodie destination that Costa Mesa has become known for. So I thought those are very important comments to just add on behalf of the applicant this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. And as I'm, I'm sure you and the applicant team may know, Orange Coast College has one of the most robust culinary programs around. It even has its own restaurant onsite.
Excellent.
A couple, I believe. It also has a food pantry as well for the students. Any other questions from commission? All right, folks, thank you so much. You're welcome to take a seat. Thank you for, for answering all our questions. We'll go ahead and open up for public comments at this time, starting with chambers. So if there's anyone here in chambers who wishes to speak, please come forward to either podium. You'll have three minutes to speak. At one minute, you'll hear a chime, and we'll start with you, sir.
Thank you. Again, Jeff Hallmark, appreciate the lively discussion and the presentation from city staff and the commission tonight. I echo the commissioners' concerns about noise living in the neighborhood, living in the block nearest to the Harbor Center Shopping Center. I can personally comment, even with the 1999 master plan, with the 15-foot wall on the east side of the entire property, I still hear the deliveries, I still hear the trucks from Home Depot. So I second the concerns about noise coming from the patio and doing the best to mitigate it. At no point in this evening has skyward attenuation been discussed about the outside patio, particularly the Wilson patio. The conceptual art only appears to address large tapestries of some umbrella or canvas, which will do little to mitigate the noise. And being close to the neighborhood is, that's where I have a concern, certainly. Additionally, there's been no mention of the proximity of the property to Wilson Park, which in itself already has a persistent blight with crime and vandalism and other concerns. Now we're talking about onsite service and the closer proximity. It's one thing to say to stumble out and nix pizza across the entire parking lot and get to the park, but now we're talking within a 90-second or a two-minute walk from the establishment there. So I really do question the onsite, onsite service of the liquor license perspective there, just in terms of trying to continue to be a part of the community, the local neighborhood, and, and continue that family environment where we already have one issue at, at hand. Offsite, there's plenty of places to purchase around there, I'm not questioning that, but just having somebody tie one on and then stumble into the park really would start to be a concern. And then, yeah, as far as the noise is concerned, just the persistent nature of it, in contrast to, say, the deliveries, which had been, which are more infrequent and irregular, we're talking about a steady hum almost till 11 o'clock at night, and we're talking about a stage next to a door that's automatic, playing out till 10:30. I can already, I hear the fair, I, I hear the, the shopping center, we hear the high school football game. So bringing something literally into our backyard definitely, definitely brings some level of concern to the College Park community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in chambers? Mr. Vexovich.
Good evening, council. I just want to start with saying that I think this project's awesome. God, it's like, so I was, I was looking for an apartment about six or so months ago, and I was looking in this area, and I intentionally didn't choose it because the Northgate wasn't there yet. I was like, I wanted to have a supermarket I could walk to, and there's kind of a food desert right now. So it's, I think it's just so exciting. Back when I, I went to Modern Day for high school quite a long time ago, we had a Northgate up the street, and it was a great place to get great food, and, I don't know, it was just, it was just awesome. So I'm so excited for this. I'm so excited to have a place that people can enjoy their time at, a place where people can recreate at, a place where people can, you know, enjoy culinary diverse food, and I think, I think that's amazing. And so that's, that's super exciting to me, and, you know, I, I hope that there can be TVs on the patio. I mean, it sounds like an amazing place to, you know, enjoy yourself, an amazing place to, to watch a World Cup game, an amazing place to like, what an added benefit this is to Costa Mesa, the, the millions of dollars that these people are about to spend in our city. It's, it's an investment. And so that's just something I, I wanted to mention. The other thing I wanted to mention, though, while I'm here, is actually a different point. So, you know, many of you all know me as a person who comes to damn near every city council public comment. Some of you know me as a board member of the Costa Mesa Alliance for Better Streets. Some of you may not know me as the State Policy Director for Streets for All. And last year, we worked very, very hard to pass AB 2097 from Assemblymember Laura Friedman, which removed minimum parking requirements across the state, within a half-mile of major transit stops, for housing, according to certain affordability thresholds, but also for commercial properties. And I don't believe that there should be any parking mandate for this commercial property, because this files, this falls within half-mile of major transit corridors on Harbor Boulevard. So I actually would encourage you all to ask Mr. Preziosi, who I'm told is, is on the line right now, if there can even be a legal mandate for a parking minimum right now for our commercial property on this, at this site. I don't think there, I don't think there can be. And I also think that the consultant, who we have forced Northgate to pay for, gave you 28 pages of really fancy graphs that is utterly bullshit and pseudoscience. There is no evidence for any of their, their metrics actually bearing out in practice in Costa Mesa and others. And you can see the foremost leaders of parking, like Donald Shoup, the professor out of UCLA who wrote the damn book on parking, saying that all of these parking consultants don't actually have any sort of verifiable backing in the outcomes of what they're doing. It's models off of predictions, off of assumptions, that is, at the end of the day, a really nice fancy back-of-the-napkin math that doesn't tell you much. So I'd encourage us to follow in accordance with state law before HCD makes us, or before the state makes us, that's AB 2097, and also just get away from pseudoscience, which is parking minimums as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak? Restart your time. Yes, ma'am. It is right now.
Okay. I'm representing the owner from the center across the street, Gray Plaza, with the At Home Shopping Center. And we had written a letter, so I'm just going to read what he had written. "We have great concerns about the outside dining area, the outside live entertainment, and the serving of alcohol beverages in such close proximity to our center. We are concerned about the possibility of increased litter, noise, and the lack of supervision of customers who may eat and drink both inside and outside of the established seating area. We are also concerned about their customers using our parking lot to park and then cross the street to patronize that center. When Albertson's was operating, the parking lot in front of their store was busy and pretty full. With Northgate combining a grocery store with a restaurant, and I guess bar, and the city allows a reduction in the number of parking spaces they should have for these two uses, our parking lot will most certainly be impacted by their overflow of customers. This situation already exists with the Newport Rib Company Restaurant, whose customers frequently use our parking lot, reducing available parking for our tenants, employees, and customers. Our security guards and janitorial staff already have their hands full dealing with vagrants, drunks, drug addicts, noise complaints, litter, and people who leave their car here all day to work somewhere else. Allowing an outside area to serve alcohol could encourage more of the same. Over the years, we have had to increase the amount of security, janitor service, and recently added several security gates on this property in the, in the amount exceeding $50,000 to deal with these problems, all paid for by ownership and the tenants. We do not want increased problems and more expenses. We get very little support from the police department when we have had to call for their assistance in dealing with these issues. Many times, the police do not respond at all or show up so late that our guards have already had to handle a potentially dangerous situation by themselves. And when the police do arrive during a situation, the security guard reports that sometimes the police do not support their position in protecting our private property. With Northgate, when Northgate was considering moving into our shopping center years ago, we visited several of their stores, and not one of the stores we visited had an outside eating area that served alcohol with entertainment. Instead, they had a few tables inside their markets located Instead, they had a few tables inside their markets located near their deli and salsa bar, and they did not serve alcohol. Managing a large supermarket and a restaurant serving alcohol are two very different types of businesses requiring experience and enough personnel to ensure their businesses do not affect the public or neighboring private properties."
Your time is up, ma'am. Thank you very much. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak? All right, seeing none, Anna, if we can go to Zoom.
David Martinez, you may now provide your public comment.
Thank you. So first of all, I want to say that I'm very excited to see Northgate in Costa Mesa. I know that my mother usually goes over to San Ana to that location, so it's good to bring some tax dollars home. I also wanted to say that a 28-page parking analysis is absolutely insane to me. The fact that you all have to read that, that someone had to write that and make it is, someone got paid to do all this, Mark said it best, pseudoscience is crazy. I don't think that, yeah, this project shouldn't have any minimum parking requirements. I think that it's great that we're using up that space for what looks to be, I saw the renderings, it looks amazing. I believe someone mentioned Grand Central Market in LA as like kind of a similar experience, and I can say that Grand Central Market brings in a lot of people. There's a place across from where I'm studying at USC, Mercado La Paloma, that I think also provides a similar experience, and it's great, it's always, it always has people, and that's what I want to see more of in Costa Mesa. I want people to come here and say, like, wow, this is just a, such a nice place to be, and I think that's what this provides, and I think it's what a big parking lot does not provide. So I'm glad to see that. And for concerns about other things like noise and such, I think that's just what a city brings. It's what makes a place lively and entertaining, and, I mean, frankly, I'm just excited to see it come in finally. I'll get to stop answering questions from my parents about when is it finally moving in. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Call-in user, you may provide your public comment.
I think we're all excited about Northgate Market coming in. However, we've had experience in the past where we've had restaurants with continuing problems, and our code enforcement have not been able to mediate the problem. So we have quality-of-life issues with people that have lived next to, even gyms. We have someone who is coming to council for the last three or four months, the whole community, with a gym that the music is not containable, the bass and the treble and whatnot. So I do have regards and of that. And the last speaker that said, you know, science is crazy, well, I'll sort of hang my hat on science. And I think that, you know, when you want an atmosphere that people are going to come to visit, it's not going to be a snarl of cars. And I think that, that traffic is, and parking is certainly something that we'll all do. If there's too many cars in a certain location, I just pass it by and go somewhere else. So we're excited to see them there, and we wish them luck, and we want to make sure that the quality of life of the people that are living to the rear of them isn't affected. And good luck, and we'll see you when we see you.
Thank you, Ms. Bedoni.
There is no other.
Any, anyone else on telephone?
No, there's not, Mr. German.
Okay, great. Thank you, Anna. I will now close the public comment portion of the public hearing and ask commissioners if you have any further comments of the applicant. All right, seeing none. Does the applicant have any closing comments? You're, you're welcome to or not, it's, it's your choice. Okay. All right, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any further questions of staff? Vice Chair.
Yeah, if Mr. Preziosi is on the line, one of the speakers mentioned AB 2097. As I understood, that, that applies to development projects, but maybe if he was looking that up, don't want him to have done that for nothing.
Hey, Commissioner Tola, would you like a response from me?
Yes, please. On whether, uh, Assembly Bill 2097 would be applicable, applicable to this project.
I don't understand why it would be applicable to this project, but I would refer to the building services director.
I was looking at part of the analysis. What was the question again, from AB 20?
2097.
It was, it was from the development. It was a question for, does it relate to a development?
Yeah, whether it would be applicable to this project or not.
I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know. We did treat it the same way that we would treat any project. It was in compliant. So the reality of it is, is what we really looked at from this project perspective was the requirement that if you remove parking in a master plan, it has to be in, there has to be analysis, and that's what we did. So we, we believe that this is, to some degree, a market for a market. There are some ancillary uses that go beyond that, but we did study that, obviously, with the, a, a very comprehensive parking analysis. And as you can see, it, it's very detailed, but from that question, I'm sorry. But yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know what that specific requirement, there are about 16 of them right now, and one of them requires that, one of them added commercial development in with development, and I believe there is a exception for the requirement for parking for certain developments, but I don't know what the definition of development is per se for that, for that specific state provision.
Okay, thank you.
But I could follow up and give you that.
Sure.
Without a problem.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. And I'll, I'll extend that, Director Dropkin, and say that if you find something that relates to minimum parking requirements or some kind of waiver for it, that it would be something good to send to all of us, just so that we're on the same page, and perhaps the public isn't thinking something that isn't actually applicable. That would be preferable.
Yeah, since the applicant didn't ask, and he certainly, in the application, didn't provide more parking, it didn't seem like that would be an issue that would trigger our, our, our concerns with it.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, but I will do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Vivar.
Director Dropkin, I don't know, I don't know if I missed this or not, but, so kind of going off some of the concerns that were shared about potential parking spillover or issues with parking on, on the, in the Harbor Center. Is there a language anywhere in there about if a parking issue were to arise that the administrator, zoning administrator would look at any kind of potential mitigations? And I've seen similar language to this in some of the cannabis applications that are underparked or just, just barely meet their minimum parking requirements. So would that be something that's already in here, or we could, or do you think we could add that kind of language in here to kind of maybe help give people peace of mind who are worried about parking spillover?
The latter, it's not in there currently.
Okay. Would that be a simple kind of copy and paste, or would we have to kind of?
No, that, that is a catch-all condition, so it's not a problem, and it works for all projects.
All right, thank you. And that's it for me, Mr. German.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will now close the public hearing, and I will ask staff to reiterate some of the discussion points from earlier as it relates to potential amendments for the conditions of approval. So if you can just kind of go through those real quick, hopefully all of us can take note, and then we'll bring it back up to the dais and have a little discussion before we bring it to a motion, okay?
No problem. There were about, almost a little over a dozen, I believe, of them, maybe a little less because some overlapped. There was a concern about the TVs on the outside patio. There was mention about monitoring alcohol service in the restaurant areas. There was a mention about potential rodent mitigation with the silos, amplified music on the stage, whether it be limited, the footings for the.
Just one second, Director. I'm, I'm trying to write this all while you're.
No problem. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Because you take impeccable notes.
[laughing]
And I don't. We had rodent mitigation, and then what was the next one?
Type of amplified music or amplification music on the stage.
Okay.
Along with that, you, there was also a mention with the door system.
Okay.
The nearest the stage and out to the outdoor area.
Take them out, two double doors?
Correct.
Or two sets of double doors?
Yeah. A vestibule door situation.
Okay.
The footings for the patio were a question from Commissioner Vivar versus bollards for protection. There was a question about the outdoor patio exiting, and then the noise control for those exiting doors.
All right.
If the technical noise information was available to the city was a question, and I think it was resolved that that is a possibility, if we want to add that as a condition, that's something that certainly could be done.
Okay.
And then recording, that, that was based on the recording, the noise monitoring, like as an archival. Bike racks was mentioned.
And did we get an answer as to how many bike racks or bike spots there would be?
There was not a requirement for the bike racks or, or a, or a condition that, that triggered it, but certainly I could speak to our active transportation coordinator and ask him what would be appropriate if that was a condition that the commission wished to require.
Okay.
So it could be something based on a future requirement by the active transportation coordinator. But the applicant did mention there was certain green requirements or architectural requirements for that as well. So I'm sure they would correlate if, if worst comes to worst.
Okay. All right, bike racks?
Bike racks. And that was it. That was, that was what I got through.
So we stopped at bike racks?
It stopped, it stopped generally at bike racks, and the rest of, and the, the other ones that I got were, I kind of signaled as an overlap.
Okay.
Some of the other conditions.
Great.
I, hopefully I didn't miss any, but I'm, I'm willing to open it, the fact that I might have.
Bike racks and then end. Okay. Thank you, Director Dropkin. Thank you for taking such impeccable notes, and thank you, Mr. Aldana, for supplementing all this. I really appreciate it. All right. Commissioners, before we bring this to a motion, after hearing what Director Dropkin mentioned in about those nine or 10 different potential areas of consideration for revisions to the conditions of approval, do you have any further thoughts on what was put forward? We have, we can start with TVs on the outside patio. I will say that I think it's a good idea to forego the use of TVs precisely because it would potentially create an environment for people to be loud, cheering on, exceeding the noise only at certain times, but there are also monitors out there that would monitor that. In this particular case, the city would only seem to react once there's a complaint that comes forward and not before, and that's as currently written. So I'm tempted to just say, if this is a family environment that's meant to be on the more casual, peaceful side, it seems more reasonable to me to just forego the TVs altogether. Does anyone have any further thoughts? Vice Chair.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I would, I would want to hear from, probably on all of these, I'm interested in hearing what the applicant has to say about these potential conditions, but TVs on the outside of Wilson, I know we have so many conditions dealing with noise where, where we would react to those with code enforcement, but they have three patios, and, and not having them on Wilson, that sounds reasonable to me, just because of the proximity to the residences.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair. Anyone else? Commissioner Vivar.
Yeah, I just want to say I agree with that. I, I thought of maybe a potential middle ground where we limit TVs up till, say, I don't know, eight or 9:00 PM during weekdays and 10:00 PM on weekends or something, but I, I think the, having the TVs gone from the patio is probably safer, and as you said, but very astute observation about the family environment, that the TVs out there, especially during peak sports seasons, probably wouldn't be conducive to that. So I, I think the, if the applicant wants to have TVs inside and they're able to find the space for that, maybe in one of the other seating areas, I think that would be great.
Okay.
Time to explore. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Anyone else? Okay, we'll take note of that. Number two, monitoring alcohol in the restaurant in terms of number of people to observe what's going on. I'm happy to hear what everyone thinks, but it, it seems like there's already a system in place with the current security plan with one onsite security officer during most times, and then it sounds like potentially two at peak hours. That seems like pretty reasonable to me, and I'm not sure we have to go as heavy-handed to guarantee that there's dedicated staff, just to make sure that there's people, you know, not drinking too much beer in too many places. So that's my thought. Commissioner Zick.
So I agree with you on that. My concern had been that, and this will probably happen, but I don't think it'll be out of control, and that is, I think people may go there, may just get a beer, may sit down and listen to the band, especially if it's advertised that Thursday night is, you know, this is who's going to be there. I can see that happening. But I think since what they're striving for is a family environment and not a sports bar, which is why I'm in complete agreement with not having big screen TVs, then I don't think people will, as a habit, show up only to drink. So I think it's a reasonable approach that they're having onsite security, maybe as a condition of approval to state that, but I think that's sufficient.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Anyone else? Okay, all right. Moving on to number three, rodent mitigation. It seems like from the applicant's response that the, the stainless steel silo and the current measures that are already in place are sufficient, and I don't believe there's anything that we need to necessarily guarantee because clearly it's in their best interest not to have rodents. So I, I'm not sure that we need to create a, a rodent condition in there, it would seem, it would seem redundant to me. Commissioner Vivar.
Yeah, Alice, I agree. That was my concern, and I, I think that I was very satisfied with the applicant's response to their plan mitigation, and I think they'll keep that from becoming an issue.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Number four, on the topic of amplified music, actually, I'm going to make a 4.1 here. On the topic of amplified music, I, let's go ahead and first start with the concept of the two-double-door system or the vestibule discussion that we had earlier. It would seem to me that a vestibule setup would almost guarantee that none of the inside music would be getting outside at least very easily, amplified or otherwise. But I, I'm happy to hear your thoughts because I'm still kind of formulating my opinion as we speak. Commissioner Zick.
So I agree that that would probably be more foolproof than, than simply hoping that the current approach will be adequate. I think I, I see a, a problem, or I see an undesirability, certainly from the applicant's standpoint, of, of putting something like that in that then makes it look less like a patio, which is an extension of the market, and more like. less like a patio, which is an extension of the market and more like you're leaving and people might not even, uh, it, it might not even occur to them that they can go out there. A, a, a different approach that I wondered about was if, on the, um, what would be the east side of the soundstage, so just on the edge of the soundstage, before you would get to the double doors, the sliding doors, if they had a wall there, that would attenuate a fair amount of the sound from the soundstage essentially directing it to the interior of the restaurant as opposed to it being spilling out through these doors that are going to be constantly opening and closing. Of course, if they move the soundstage somewhere else, further away from the double doors, you know, but I, I didn't see an easy solution to that in the layout without redoing everything. Um, so I- The, the vestibule is certainly, uh, uh, one approach and it's a good one. It's expensive, takes up floor space and doesn't make the patio feel integral. Putting up an additional wall next to the soundstage would be a lot less expensive, but I hate designing things from the dais. It's the sort of thing that, you know, I, I would have loved to have seen pounded out before it comes to us. You know, I get this on a Friday, uh, I don't have an opportunity to meet with these people. I don't have an opportunity to meet with staff. Um, I don't like designing it from here, but when, I don't have a lot of time to look at something and brainstorm ideas that we're kind of left with this. So I hate having them come up and ask Mr. Lay, hey, what do you think about putting a wall there? And he'd say, well, how high is it going to be? I'll, I'll make up a number. What would it be constructed of? I give them some ideas. And how do we actually put that in a condition of approval and say, okay, now your approval is conditioned on that? So that's the problem that I have with, not with what you're trying to do, but I have the problem with trying to solve a problem up here where it's not obvious without some redesign. Um, a wall or a vestibule, something, I don't know. Cutting off, uh, the, the live music by 10:30 helps a little bit, but as one of the speakers said, um, you know, what sound gets over the top of an eight-foot wall would get over the top of a 10-foot wall? And what is that? Um, you know, I, I, so I struggle with the, the vestibule idea because I just think it, it, it might be foolproof, but it might make this patio area not feel at all integral.
And you understand what you're saying and I, I do share some of those thoughts as well, Commissioner Zick. Um, Mr. Lay, if you wouldn't mind coming up real quick, could just ask you a quick question. In a potential redesign of the stage area, seeing as how it's right next to where the current setup is for the double doors, would some kind of wall on the side of where the doors are be, um, is there enough of, uh, enough space in the, in the current setup to put some kind of wall or barrier there that would concentrate the sound back inward and not somehow travel back through the double doors?
Um, what? And-
I'm sorry.
Sorry, there, there is a, a limitation, if you will, based on the arrangement, um, due to an accessible lift that we, um, want to bring patrons, uh, with those needs up to the stage because it is a stepped, uh, uh, stage. Uh, there is an accessible platform, uh, and lift at, at that position where, um, I believe you're, um, instigating a, a wall or a barrier. Um, in terms of, uh, the previous two concerns that, uh, um, staff and, and commissioners you had and the public regarding, um, TVs, I think, um, conceding with the idea that, uh, there's no TVs, the security guards, that this is a family environment. The music, um, in itself wouldn't be portrayed to, uh, or want to be, uh, amplified outside of, uh, these walls, outside of these, uh, auto doors. Uh, the moment the auto doors come on, uh, the windscreen, uh, does turn on to mitigate any pest control, uh, entering the building. So, uh, with that, consider it a, um, I think you would have more white noise than, than you would, uh, uh, music coming out of, uh, of the market itself.
So what, what you're saying, Mr. Lay, is that, um, some kind of small sound wall on the side of the stage is not tenable in its current form?
I, I, I don't believe so.
You don't? Okay. Alright, thank you. You're welcome to take a seat.
Uh, colleagues, if I will?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Vivar?
I think, uh, maybe, uh, I understand that design constraints might, uh, be up, up till when music is allowed, say, for example, up till nine PM Sunday through Thursday and maybe up till 10 Friday and Saturday. I don't know what you think of that.
If I'm, if I might also add something else for the commission to consider, we might, the commission might consider, um, adding the condition that essentially dictates that the applicant will, um, have the noise consultant review that area in more detail and come up with some type of mitigation proposal to prevent, um, the entertainment noise to be heard offsite. Per, per the approval of the Director of Development Services. Just a possibility.
Yeah, um, to, uh, to me, Director Drapkin, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of teeth in that. I'd rather just make the decision one way or the other if it's go, go do another expensive study. Um, I'm not really inclined to support that, but I do understand where you're coming from, for sure. Um, colleagues, do you have any further thoughts on this? Commissioner Zick?
I would be interested in, in, uh, hearing from the applicant, their, uh, thought or reaction to what Commissioner Vivar was suggesting. In light of the operational concept that you have, which is family oriented, um, and the likelihood or not, however you, uh, estimate your clientele being there past nine o'clock, 10 o'clock, um, how critical or important live music is to you in those time periods? And is it a Sunday through Thursday with, or Monday through Thursday with reduced hours and Friday, Saturday till later? I mean, what's your, I, I'd be interested in knowing your reaction to that.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Vivar, can you just repeat that one more time just to make sure I got it right, please?
Yeah, so just, I was, uh, in, in light of the, uh, constraints that the architect raised regarding any kind of a, a wall or moving of the stage, uh, I was, uh, kind of floating the idea of limiting the live music up till, say, uh, nine PM maximum for, uh, uh, Sunday through, through Thursday. And, and my reasoning for that is, is that people, especially in the residential area, uh, might be going to sleep a bit, uh, earlier on those days of the week as, um, the next day is a workday, but a Friday and Saturday. Uh, essentially have weekends, uh, weekend days, uh, on, um, on the day after. And so, uh, then having that limit of 10 PM. So I'd essentially just be moving down your music for, um, allowance till 10 PM. So shaving off 30 minutes for Fridays and Saturdays and up till nine PM for, uh, Sundays through Thursday.
I think we could make that work. I think that would be a, a good place for us, especially because, uh, most of our, uh, entertainment would, uh, be during the day.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Um, fellow commissioners, do you have any further thoughts on, um, limiting the time just a little bit? Does that sound, okay. Vice Chair, do you have any further thoughts?
I'll, I'll go along with it. I'll, I won't hold up a motion over that, but I, I think it's a little bit of an overreach.
Okay, so, um, in lieu of double doors and any further discussion of a sound wall or any study that accompanies it, um, we're looking at limiting music, uh, to 10 PM Friday through Saturday and, uh, stopping music at nine PM Sunday through Thursday. Is that correct, Commissioner Vivar?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's, that's also one of the conditions there. Okay. Thank you. Um, you can take a seat, sir. Thank you. Uh, on the topic of amplified music, is that something that we want to dictate in the conditions of approval or allow staff to, um, weigh in on this at a later point if the applicant wants to apply for a conditional, a minor conditional use permit for some kind of, um, it would be an MCU P or a zoning administrator approval for live, live music, right? Or for amplified music or events? Director Drapkin?
Yeah, current, currently the conditions of approval don't, um, can limit amplified music on the inside.
Okay.
Uh, so if the, um, they wouldn't need a permit necessarily for amplified music, but it could be a condition of the commission if they chose to that, um, that the music not be amplified.
Okay.
And that would be an added condition.
Okay. Um, I can, I can tell my fellow commissioners that I don't feel very strongly one way or the other. I think that it's probably in their best interest to control the volume that they think reflects what their patrons would want to hear, whether it's amplified or not. So I'm, I'm tempted to trust their judgment on this. Commissioner Vivar?
I agree and I think that, um, the, um, previous condition that I formulated, I think, um, uh, qualifies any kind of concerns I have and hopefully concerns that any of the, uh, residents who are neighbors, uh, might also have about this.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Alright, unless there's any other comments on that, moving on to footings in the, uh, the, the footing depth for the patio. I just, I just assumed that they're going to have to meet the minimum requirements of the city and there's no need to create an additional condition out of this. Commissioner Vivar?
Correct. I'm satisfied with, uh, the architect's response to my question.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other thoughts? No. Um, on the topic of outdoor patio exiting and noise control, it sounds to me like after the applicant's response to, um, Commissioner Zick's earlier questions, that that was satisfied. So I don't think we need to write in a, a catch-all at all. Commissioner Zick?
So I agree with that. Um, I do think we have a couple of conditions of approval that probably need a little bit of wordsmithing to make it abundantly clear that exit doors are to remain closed at all times. Uh, condition of approval number 11 and number 43 both, uh, touch on this, but I think, uh, it should just be abundantly clear that exit doors are to remain closed at all times. I don't think we need a separate condition. I just think we need to clean up the existing conditions that speak to those exit doors.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Zick. Director Drapkin, is that something that you can do or do we need to actually write that in and have it be a part of the motion?
Uh, if the commission, I can make the change to put it should be part of the-
Okay, we'll do that then. Um, I, I think that's something worth, worth supporting, just clear language, um, as it relates to conditions of approval, 11 and 43 in terms of the doors. And by doors staying closed, um, it's not to say that they're, you know, bolted shut, but obviously because they're emergency doors that they stay closed. Um, but they are, they, you can exit out of them. I think that's, goes without saying, right? Does anyone have any further thoughts on that?
It's to make them emergency exit only.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no outs and not to prop them open like maybe from what we've heard recently about noise.
Sure.
From a gym. Okay, uh, Commissioner Vivar?
No, I, I think I agree. Um, I think based on this, uh, architect's response, I believe that they'll stay shut, but, um, I guess it doesn't hurt to have some extra language in there to ensure that that happens.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Um, going on to number, I guess it would be 7.1, um, technical noise info to send to the city. Um, it sounds to me like one of the most underdeveloped parts of this application relates to how the city is going to see these data, disseminate these data, whether it's something that's going to be streamed 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and that the city will have a rolling file of those noise profiles so that they can analyze at a later date. Or if it's something that the city will request of the applicant or the applicants designate in the form of a sound engineer to say, we want this time signature to make sure that it stayed within the decibels or the LAQ, um, we don't know that yet. So I don't know if we need to have some language that's a little bit clearer about how we receive those data. Commissioner Zick?
I think it's less a question of the city receiving it as it is a question of the city having access and the ability to access. And if there was a condition of approval that simply required archival recording of the noise, uh, monitors for some period, whether that's seven days, 12, 14 days, or, you know, some period of time. I think simply a requirement of archival recording of the noise monitors would give the city an opportunity to respond and look at data if there were complaints from neighbors.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Zick. I am, I'm, uh, I also agree with that statement. I think that anything that we can do to take work off of the plate of our city employees is going to be a good thing because I already know that they're so overwhelmed with so many things. Asking one of them to become a de facto sound engineer, um, sounds like just that much more work. So I think, um, the condition will read something to the effect of the applicant will allow the city to have access to an archival of, of the system upon request and that those data will be disseminated by the applicants designate. It'd be something like that, okay? Any further thoughts? Okay. Alright, bike racks? Vice Chair? I feel like that's a vice chair question.
Sure. Um, like, like, um, Commissioner Zick, I don't, I don't want to be designing this from the dais. Um, well, it would be nice that bike racks, I mean, this is going to be a place where people go out to eat and hang out and have a few drinks. We're improving Wilson Street right now. This is immediately connected to Joanne and Tanager Trails, which connects you to Placentia, which connects you to San Ana River Trail. It's a ton of people within walking distance. If, if we make it so it's inhospitable to people arriving on bikes so they're awkwardly looking around where to, we're, we're discouraging people from getting there safely. Um, I think this, these, um, yeah, I don't know. I, I'm, but where I started, I'm, I'm not, uh, comfortable figuring this out from here on these little plans in front of us. But, and I don't know how I would write a condition, how we would form a condition. So I will just say for the record, um, I hope that when, um, this goes through plan check, that our planning department talk with our active transportation manager to come up with a solution that provides ample, convenient parking in front of the store, not by the dumpster, not by the back. I've been in places, shopping centers like this where you try to lock it, lock a bike to itself by the door where you feel it's going to be safe and the security guard comes over and says, no, you have to, you have to park it over there where no one's around, kind of by the dumpster, right? So let's just, um, let's have that in the record. I, I think that's all we can do.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair. I'll go ahead and comment, um, before I pass it along to you guys in saying that I think oftentimes, um, that the concept of bikes and bike racks and active transportation is something that is not currently here, but it is something as to where we are going as a community. It's kind of a field of dreams analogy. You build it, they will come. That's kind of where we're at. They're not here yet. There's a very small contingent of people who actually utilize the infrastructure that we're planning, but we are hoping that more people use it. In this particular case, unlike other areas that I can imagine, this seems to me like the perfect storm of actually wanting more than any minimum requirement because it would seem really fruitful. It seems like a lot of folks would be biking to this place and, and that there's a high likelihood that bike racks would, would actually be pretty well filled up. Um, Commissioner Vivar?
Yeah, I, I agree. Um, and so, uh, so Vice Chairman, this isn't so much a condition or even a recommendation, but just kind of comments to go on the record, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I, I agree as long as, of course, we're making sure that, uh, we're keeping the, um, ADA required space. And I, I don't think we should just go with the minimum four feet because that essentially means that you- means that you have, I don't know, a wheelchair or whatever right up against the sidewalk and then somebody else wanting to walk by wouldn't be able to go past them. So I think that going a bit wider when we can is, is a good practice. So for example, the architect said six to eight feet for the silo. That sounds okay to me. So just making sure that if we are providing bike racks, you know, we are, also aren't limiting the sidewalk with, because I think having wider sidewalks is a good thing. That's it for me.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Zick, did you have a?
I had a question for staff along those lines. If the applicant decided that they wanted to take a parking stall that was outside the front of their entrance, not one of the handicap stalls, but a couple further back maybe, and convert those by putting bike racks, would they have to get city approval to do that?
The code currently allows for one bike rack to be used as a vehicle parking space. So from a, they would have to do that from a design perspective, but from a quantity, I don't think so. So basically the answer is they would, they could do it.
Okay. So if they took Commissioner Tollers' suggestion to heart and said, you know what, we'll take a look at that and maybe we'll throw a bike rack into one of these parking stalls, they wouldn't need to come back for any approval?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Anyone else? All right. We'll let that stand as a comment in the record. I don't think there's any need to write it in as a condition. Okay? I think that brings us to the end. All right. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion just because I've taken all the notes, if that's okay? Okay. Here is my motion. To find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, per SEQA guidelines, section 15301, class 1 for existing facilities, and section 15303, class 3 for new construction or conversion of small structures, and approve planning applications PA 23-03, perin PA 98-50A3, and PA 23-02 and ZA 23-01, and the public convenience and necessity determination subject to the conditions of approval with the additional conditions, that there will be no TVs on the outside patio for the enclosed patio. the outdoor, that the language in conditions of approval 11 and 43 be further amended or there be a new condition altogether based off of conditions of approval 11 and 43, that the doors in the outside patio remain closed, i.e. not to be opened unless during an emergency. That also, as an additional condition, that there, that the city be provided a recording of the noise archive upon request and have it be suggested that the applicant furnish any further data dissemination or interpretation or analysis as needed to the city upon request. And that music, whether amplified or not, go, be provided, or at least will stop Friday through Saturday by 10:00 p.m. and will cease Sunday through Thursday at 9:00 p.m. That is my motion, and is there a second? Commissioner Toll, thank you. This was a wonderful experience getting to hear about your project, and if it didn't show for me earlier, I'm tremendously excited to see your store come to Costa Mesa. I think it's a wonderful project that just by the nature of your imagination to put something really neat together, that it required a really deep level of deliberation from this body, that we took the time to think deeply about how to make this project happen from a planning commission kind of standpoint. I think that it's wonderful, can't wait to see it. I think it's going to be a great success. I think that the additional conditions that we tacked on to this project are, I think, rather thoughtful. We've discussed it in detail, and I think it's going to work out okay. So with that said, really appreciate your time, especially for all the, you know, hard hitting questions. You gave some tremendous and wonderful answers to us, so thank you for that. With that, Vice Chair, would you like to add to that?
Sure. I agree. Despite all, a lot of fussy, fussy questions from up here, I think a lot of us are very excited and hopefully you'll have a lot of very happy and excited customers going through your doors pretty soon. We're, we're thrilled that you decided to invest in Costa Mesa, and I think it's going to be a great part, especially to bring that shopping center back to life, but for, center for the whole city to enjoy. There's a couple objections that we heard tonight, and I think we, we all respectfully took those into consideration, especially noise, and I think we came to some good But I'm obviously in support of the motion and some of those, those objections, I think, will resolve themselves or not even materialize. So thank you for staff also for all the work you've put into this. That's it.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Vivar?
Yeah, I am in full support of the motion as well, and I also want to echo you, Mr. Chairman, in that I'm excited for this project. I heard about Northgate coming to Costa Mesa back in 2020, and it's been a long time coming, and I know there's been some delays for the ownership to kind of get up and running and get to the stage of presenting to planning commission. But I'm really excited for what this is going to bring to Costa Mesa, and I know this is going to be a vibrant place for the community and will definitely be a, a place, a destination as well, rather than just a place that you go shopping and leave, but a place that builds community. And I think it's important to, for us to find any way that we can as a city in building community. And so when applicants for businesses such as this that want to build that family environment, want to come to Costa Mesa, I think it's a, a great thing. And also the fact that you took the, the initiative to hold two community events, which were very well attended, I think shows that you're committed to working with the community and to taking the community's concerns into consideration and making sure that you're a good community partner and neighbor to the surrounding businesses and neighborhood area. So I'm confident that you will continue to do that once your store is actually operational at the same spirit that you've shown us pre-planning commission and during today's meeting and being able to have those honest discussions with us about our concerns and the concerns of the community shows that you will be a, a good operator of your supermarket. And I am excited for the supermarket to be up and running and to visit your market as well. And that's, that's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Commissioner Rojas?
Yeah, just again, I want to echo the, the communication from my colleagues here and also wanted to point out something. I really appreciate the concept that you guys are building here. I like the way that you're going forward, being innovative on it, especially when, you know, you're saying today that it's à la Grand Central Market. I have many fond memory of Grand Central Market growing up as a child, and I'm really excited that you guys are bringing that here where Costa Mesa citizens can be developing their own memories in that same style. So I wish you guys the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rojas. Commissioner Zick, do you have any thoughts?
I do. And before I start sharing those, was it your intention to include a condition of approval that required onsite security or not?
Uh, no.
Okay. I will be supporting the motion. I'm excited about Northgate coming to Costa Mesa. I had not been familiar with the store or chain or business enterprise. My experience at your store, one of your stores in San Ana this past weekend was exceptional. And it was after seeing that store that I really felt like I couldn't wait for your store to come to Costa Mesa. I think the community is going to be thrilled to see it. I wanted to comment on a couple of things. I should probably let some of the comments go, but, but I can't because people actually listen to these meetings. The first thing I'd say is fussy questions led to an improved set of conditions of approval, an improved set of conditions of approval that I think will result in an improved project and an improved reception by the community. Second thing I would say is that we're representing the community up here, not just our own personal ideologies. And we don't have a packed audience tonight, nothing close to that. What does that mean? We don't really know what it means. Does it mean the community is 100% behind your project? Don't know. We get some people that come in and say they don't like certain aspects of it, but what about the rest of the community? A big part of the community assumes we're doing our job and that staff is doing their job. That means that what you've experienced so far with staff is they analyze the heck out of what it is you're proposing. Are they excited? They're doing their job. They're excited too, though, because they see what it represents to have a shop like yours come into Costa Mesa. Are we excited? Sure. But if we're not doing the same thing that the residents expect of us, then we're not doing our job. This isn't about enthusiasm. This is about making sure a quality project comes into the community with a condition of approval that runs with the land that we're going to have here forever. It's about getting it right. Parking? You know, when I went up to your San Ana store, I was able to find a parking spot. What would I do if I couldn't have found a parking spot? What if you had no requirement to provide parking? And I go to your store and I can't park? What happens? Maybe you lose out on my business because I turn around and go home or I go somewhere else. Maybe I go park in the neighborhood. Maybe I go across the street and I park in front of Home Goods. They're private property because you've underparked your project. Is that fair? No, that's why we have parking requirements. The idealistic view that we're going to have a car light or carless community is a dream. It may be a dream that comes true, but until it comes true, businesses need to properly park their businesses so customers can park there and the customers who can't park there are not impacting neighbors because that's not fair, that's irresponsible. And it's irresponsible to think that by magic, if we don't require parking, that somehow everything is going to be right in this world. It doesn't work that way, not if you understand how the world works. I'm enthusiastically supporting your project.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. I think that brings us to the vote.
That motion carries 5-0 with Commissioner Andrade recused and Commissioner Tabor absent.
Thank you, Anna. That decision is final unless appealed to the city council within seven days. Good luck to y'all. Thank you. That brings us to old business, new business. There are neither this evening, so we'll move on to departmental reports, starting with Mr. Yang, Public Services.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are no reports from the Public Works Department. Thank you. For back to the chair.
And thank you for bearing with us for three, three and a half hours, Mr. Yang. We really do appreciate it. Mr. Preziosi, thank you as well for bearing with us for three and a half hours. Do you have any reports, sir?
I have no report this evening, Chair.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And Development Services report, Mr. Drapkin?
Nothing to critically report. I did want to reiterate what some of the commissioners mentioned earlier in the meeting about the inclusionary housing ordinance review on the 16th. It is the beginning effort of the consideration of the requirement for affordable housing with certain development housing projects. So it will be a 101 type of situation with the council and the commission, and there'll be a time for questions and also a time for staff to provide an explanation of where we're at with regards to some of the technical studies that we've already created and where we need to go with, with the study and also public input and some of the most recent open house type events that we've had with this request or the process with some stakeholders.
Okay.
So all of that information will be summarized at the meeting and the commissioners will be able to attend.
Okay. Thank you. And I do have a quick question about the approach for us going into May 16th. I'm assuming that this is a, like you said, a 101 course on inclusionary housing ordinances, that there's nothing specifically that we need to prepare for. I know that I'm not. I'm treating this as if I'm brand new, I'm not coming in with any preconceived notions about things. I'm here to learn from staff. Would you say that that's a, a good way to approach what's coming up on the 16th?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Director Drapkin.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Vindicated to staff that I am out of town, I will not be at that joint session.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Zick. You'll be missed. All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you, Director Drapkin. That brings us to the end of our meeting. I'll now adjourn the meeting to our, our actual meeting to May 22nd, 2023, but we'll be seeing city council on May 16th. Have a good night. Thank you for being with us.